All right, councilors, please take your seats. I'd like to call to order the town council meeting of November 21st, 2019. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire if anyone is actively taping this session and to please make their presence known. This session is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Beedenbender?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
Dagwan?
Here.
Rap Kresetti?
Present.
Hebert?
Leveque?
Here.
Neary?
Here.
Schnep?
Here.
Shaughnessy?
Starr?
Here.
Stein Hilber?
Here.
Thank you, we have Quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I apologize.
But I'm here.
Councilor Bogan is on the dais. All right, please join me for a Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. All right, I want to welcome everyone here tonight. I want to welcome everyone here tonight, and especially welcome to our new councilors here: Councilor Shaughnessy, Councilor Starr, Councilor Clark, and Councilor Bogan. And I would just say, if you felt like you're just jumping on a moving train that didn't stop for you, it's because that did happen to you. But feel, always feel free to reach out to your fellow councilors that have been there for a while, obviously the town manager and his staff. You'll find a treasure trove of information and professionalism here with the town. We're really lucky to have the staff and the management that we do, and we're all here to help. And a lot of it goes with listening, and you definitely will pick it up. So, to make it easy on you tonight, I won't actually be calling you to read any items in, so you can relax right from the get-go, right? Maybe next time you're going to get called on. All right, so this is the time where we'd have public comment. So if anyone from the public wishes to speak, I'd ask that they please come forward, state your name, and please limit your time to three minutes. When you have about 30 seconds left, I'll let you know.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Tuttle, Centerville resident since 1964, taxpayer. Hello, town councilors, and welcome to the new members of the town council. Thank you in advance for your service to the town. I'm here to report that we had a very productive meeting yesterday at the Centerville Recreation Building on Main Street in Centerville. Britt Beedenbender, Matt Leveque, and Paul Neary were in attendance. Britt did a great job of sharing DPW maps and information with her assembled constituents. Thank you, Britt. The meeting was attended by about 100 taxpayers, unanimous in their opposition to the proposal to purchase and destroy a single-family home in order to install a sewer pump. As you may know, this has many residents of the town of Barnstable concerned on several different levels. First, the purchase of 310 Main Street would take a single-family home off the tax rolls, reducing the tax base and increasing the taxes of every single taxpayer in the town of Barnstable. Second, the precedent of purchasing single-family homes in order to destroy them to accommodate sewer infrastructure is very dangerous. There are 27 sewer pump stations in the town of Barnstable as we speak. Virtually all of them are sited on public land. Across the street from the town hall, it's on the armory property owned by the town. On Ronnieville Lane, the pumping station is in the cul-de-sac. On Snow Creek Drive and Cook Circle, it's in the cul-de-sac. The DPW has done a great job of citing sewer pump stations on public land and making sure that they are as innocuous as possible. Third, there are several high-quality sites nearby for the sewer pumping station. All of them are lower cost. One of the proposed sites is public land already. The most appropriate site, and indeed the site that has been on the wastewater management plan for decades, and the only site that has ever been mentioned in any of the plans, is in Mother's Park. The topographical study has Mother's Park site at approximately the same geographical level as the $550,000 site that the town wants to purchase. However, the site is actually below the road, so it seems to be topographical, seems to be lower and preferable.[396.34][396.34](laughter) Fourth, there was an obvious and admitted, quote, "rush to judgment" to purchase a single-family home near one of the low spots on the proposed sewer route. There have been other properties available nearby, literally across the street, available for about half the cost, that evidently were not even considered. And lastly, the standard has been to avoid tearing down houses, to avoid eminent domain, to find public land that is suitable for accommodating infrastructure improvements. The standard has never been to buy and tear down single-family homes. This rush to judgment has put us all in a difficult situation. I stand here before you, representing the hundreds of concerned taxpayers in Precinct 4 and throughout the town, that implore you to adopt a resolution consistent with taxpayers' wishes. The resolution to direct the town manager not to purchase 310 Main Street in Centerville for the purpose of a sewer pump station. This new resolution will allow us to engage in dialogue—
20 seconds.
—and learn more from the DPW about what they have planned. It will give us a chance to work together to develop a solution which does not unnecessarily add burden to taxpayers and does not significantly negatively affect villages throughout the town of Barnstable. Buying single-family homes and tearing them down should be the last alternative. Creative solutions abound. Please generate and adopt a resolution to stop the purchase of 310 Main Street for the purpose of a sewer pump. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is John Crowe. I'm the president of the Ostaville Village Association. I'm here tonight to discuss the town of Barnstable's recent efforts to collect public input on proposed new short-term rental property regulations. The town has asked the seven Barnstable Civic Association to take on part of this task by holding public forums to listen to our various members and residents. After having hosted the Ostaville Village Association forum on this issue, and since having sat in on two others, I have both an observation and a request of the town council members here tonight. At our meeting, the OVA meeting, I asked that all speakers first identify themselves and where they lived. I also, in a quest for both fairness and transparency, asked participants to disclose if they had any commercial or financial interest in the issue at hand. Many commentators complied with this request; others did not. I knew this, both because I know I knew many of the speakers and also because of a very useful app called Google. We believe that it is imperative that all views are heard and considered. It is just as important the views expressed are transparent and include disclosure of financial interest. So far in this process, we believe the town can do better. First, there exists a paper trail of the town reaching out to business interests in short-term rentals for community input, long before any actual public input was solicited. I've read these documents and can share them with those that are interested. Second, unfortunately, the town's recently completed opinion survey ended up blending homeowners' views with those of who have financial interest. And third, people with economic interests are standing up to encourage certain outcomes and not fully disclosing this inherent conflict. My simple request to this council tonight is insist on disclosure and full, fully transparent process, a fully transparent process. The home rental industry on Cape Cod is in the midst of significant generational change as to what have been traditional practices in the past. The Airbnb-type rental uses of today are not those of which we are all familiar. The town must adapt and take the zoning and regulatory action necessary to protect the quality of life for which the Cape has always been known. At a civic association meeting I recently attended on this past Tuesday evening, a rental owner suggested that no short-term rental regulations were needed. This gentleman claimed that neighbor complaints regarding out-of-control rentals were simply anecdotal, and that the town should not adopt any regulation, rental regulations, on basis of anecdote. This property owner, which I found out later on Google was a property owner, a rental property owner, said that the complainant simply should call the police and keep calling until the problem was resolved. To translate, he was saying that the afflicted neighbor should spend his wee hours acting as an unpaid property manager for the irresponsible landlord next door.
30 seconds.
This is exactly the kind of deflection of true responsibility this town council should act against. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Bill Robbins, Main Street, Centerville. Good evening, councilors, and welcome to the newest members of the board. We had an informative, constructive meeting with Councilor Beedenbender last night regarding the pump station in Centerville Village. There was a lot of passion and dialogue from residents opposed to the taking of 310 Main Street. We understand how critical advanced planning is to the project. However, we are asking you not to hastily purchase the home. Take a little more time to explore the options available without intruding into the setting of a beautiful neighborhood and needlessly spending $550,000. This is a great opportunity for the town to work with the village of Centerville on this project. I understand the town has limited in manpower and resources to explore the options. However, sometimes the best resources are the people in the area. Reach out to the residents and get the input from the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Janet Davis, and I'm here tonight representing Centerville concerned citizens. I'm here tonight to ask the council to please consider adding Ms. C.C. Dusette of Wireless Education to an upcoming agenda. We are very concerned with the planned rollout of 5G in our community, outside our homes and near our schools. It is important that communities know 5G is not a foregone conclusion. There are steps we can take to protect ourselves from this unknown, untested technology. We've all seen the telecom commercials exalting the race for 5G. This is not true. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped. Unfortunately, consumers think 5G is merely a step up from 4G. This is not true. 5G differs in that it is a millimeter wave, millimeter wave frequency that does not travel like its predecessor, 4G. It must be installed in a relay fashion atop every 10th or 12th telephone pole or lamppost on our residential and commercial roadways across the town of Barnstable. Soon. But communities are pushing back, questioning the safety of this untested radiation outside our homes. There are countless examples included in the pamphlet before you that outlines where cities, states, and countries are calling for testing before exposing their residents to 5G. Some countries are banning it outright. Just recently, the United, in the United States, New Hampshire became the first state passing a law to examine the health and environmental impacts of 5G. Vermont was next, passing an act which calls on the State Commissioner of Health to study the health consequences of wireless radiation. New York State joined in, also introducing a bill this fall to establish a commission to study the impacts of 5G. Outside of New England, Oregon passed an emergency law to investigate 5G, especially its impact on children. I could go on with further examples, but my time is limited. I will leave you with this. The Prime Minister of the United Kingdom, Boris Johnson, gave an impassioned speech before the United Nations General Assembly on September 24th of this year. He insisted that, quote, "The ethical judgments inherent in the design of new technology must be made transparent to all," and that joint efforts must be made to agree to a common set of global principles to shape the norms and standards that will guide the development of emerging technologies," end quote. We are fortunate to have the expertise of Ms. Dusette available to us in Massachusetts. She is based in Ashland and meets with scientists and physicians from around the world, sharing data regarding 5G. We urge you to invite her to speak before the council. We must learn all we can to be certain all steps were taken to protect ourselves and our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello. Adam Hanson, Precinct 3. All right, so some of you may know me, some of you probably don't. I'm with a organization called Cannabis Cape Cod, trying to get the industry on the Cape, centered in Barnstable. Makes sense. I'm just going over some of the old business and looking at the, how much money the state industry made last year. $393.7 million, the industry made statewide. Northampton got about half a million dollars between the, in their first quarter of getting business up and running. I'm just looking at this old business, $100,000 for five new police officers. Some of that money, you know, if we had the industry here with stores, collecting taxes and revenue, we could be using that money to offset some of this cost. You know, we got some wastewater infrastructure projects coming up the pipeline, you know, a billion dollars. You know, is that going to be burdened on the taxpayers? Or should the town explore any and all options in regards to revenue? You know, I think it's important that the town would consider all options. And maybe we should form a committee to explore those options. So, thank you, and I look forward to talking to some of you guys through email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vote 2. I don't know what precinct I'm in yet.[1085.65][1085.65](laughter) Two minutes, I want to welcome all of you people, the new people and the old people and the people I've met briefly and the people up there, and the people who can't see my face over here. And hopefully, there's a guy from Media Lab around, maybe in the audience or up there, who can do a little better video, so I don't have to talk to a group of people with my back to them. I don't know how to do it, but I'm sure we can do it. Welcome again. I didn't set my timer.[1142.08][1142.08](laughter)
Got two minutes left.
Okay, good. Eric, okay. Here's a song, still, same song, a pretty good song. Haven't got the words down yet, but I will, ready? All I want is a room somewhere, far away from the cold night air, with one enormous chair award, and it'd be lovely. Lots of cold and lots of heat. Singing to the microphone. I tried to get a lapel mic last time, but didn't. That's confusing. Anyhow, welcome. I'm sure we're going to do good this next decade.[1199.41][1199.41](laughter) Peace.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Going once, going twice? All right, seeing that, I'll close public comment. Do I have any councilor response to public comment?[1214.83][1214.83](laughter) Councilor Beedenbender?
Thank you very much. First, a thank you to everyone who came out tonight to participate in our meeting, and for our viewers back home, thank you as well for being involved. It has become increasingly apparent to me as I move through this, this job, that community engagement and education is so critical to the success of what we do and, and how we do it, and the mood that is created from it. To, I want to address a couple things. I want to thank Janet for coming to talk about 5G. I do think it's worthwhile putting it on our agenda, and I hope whoever ends up in the leadership position will see fit to get C.C. Dusette on the agenda. I do know that, and we've talked about this, this is not an easy situation for a municipality because we're dealing with FCC regs, which are federal regs. That said, we know that there are municipalities that have been doing certain things, so I think it is good for this council to hear what is happening across the nation, in other places, what people are thinking about, what they're concerned. So I do hope it does make it to an agenda at some point in the near future. I want to address Mr. Tuttle and Mr. Robbins' comments. Thank you for coming. I have a lot of constituents out here tonight. Yes, we had quite a robust meeting last night. There were quite a few people there, very impassioned, mostly civil, which was good. And I would say that the majority of comments that came out of it, I would say that the key message, the key takeaway, was about the process and about neighborhoods needing to be included and in the conversation. And I have already spoken to Mark Els, our town manager, and others, about how we're going to go about in this 30-year process, mind you, of a plan, how we're going to go about over the next three decades of keeping our communities engaged and informed about this project that is likely going to be, A, the most complicated and most expensive infrastructure project this town will ever take on. And there, in addition to the engineering side of it and what that means with pipes and pump stations, there's the financing side of it. And this town council is going to be faced over the next year with some very difficult decisions that are going to be, I'm sure, uncomfortable for a lot of people. And I'm sure there's going to be many meetings like we had last night, where you had a room full of impassioned people wanting to understand the process and what's going on and how they can be included. So I will make sure that I will work, you know, regardless of who is in leadership, I just as a town councillor, will work with whoever's in leadership, that we develop a comprehensive education and public outreach and community engagement plan. And I know our town manager is on board with that. I know I have other councilors who feel very strongly about that as well. So we can assure you that the process that took place with what happened at 310 Main is not what the plan was moving forward. But I also do want to address, you know, some of what is said about the hasty move and that we weren't thinking, and I just, I just want to make some clarifying statements. The vote that was taken on that property was a vote to purchase the property, not to build a pump station. That property is a placeholder. It's an insurance policy for a critical line that is going up Main Street, that's going to go across 28, connect up Finney's. And that line needs pump stations. And that vote was to secure a property if we were unable to find another suitable property that would do the job. Now, there, DPW has taken some hits on this for overlooking Mother's Park, and why are we jumping to this 310 Main Street parcel? And that's actually a very unfair assessment, because DPW, in fact, was responding very much to the community at large, because a number of years ago, when they were looking at how this infrastructure was going to go in, in this, in this area, they had to consider pump stations, and they looked at Mother's Park, and they said Mother's Park would be perfect. It fits a lot of, it's challenging, because it has to go through a legislative process at the state level, but it is a good parcel to do this work. Well, the community pushed back heavily, and DPW listened. And so DPW, in moving forward now, in the last couple of months, when they started to relook at that section of the project and what was needed to support that project, they had an opportunity. And I think it was a very wise move on their part to move forward on that piece. Now, that said, we are now in litigation, so there's only so much we can do there at this point in time. But that said, it doesn't take other options off the table. So I just want the public to understand that sometimes there may be a blip in the process of communication, because an opportunity shows up that is good for us to take advantage of. And while we would like to be forthcoming and be transparent and give you six months notice, it's not always going to happen that way. But do know that we are hearing you, we're listening to you. The comments that I heard last night, I immediately took, took back to our town leadership, our town manager, the head of our DPW, I talked to legal, and shared the concerns of everyone. So I just want you to know that you are heard, we are listening, and we will, we will act on, and we will do everything we can to come up with a good compromise and working solution for everyone. So that's, that's all I want to say on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Dagwan?
Yes, Councilor Beedenbender, I think your comments were right on the mark. I'm glad that you're keeping this open, you're giving everybody a chance from your community to hash it all out and to get a better understanding why the decision was made the way it was made. I also wanted to say to Mrs. Davis about the 5G, I think that's important, too. I'm glad that you came and spoke about it tonight. That's been a concern of mine, too. But I'm trying not to be fearful. I think sometimes we can, you know, get, scare people and get a little riled up over it before we really know all the facts. But research is definitely needed. You know, we can't just say yes to things that are, that allow the new technology. And I think the fact that you came tonight with some best practices of New Hampshire and New York were looking into this same issue was important. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we will be trying to do similar things, and maybe we can take a look at some of these other states that are already dealing with the problems and looking at the studies. And Mr. Crowe, I wanted to say that other tourist areas such as the Cape have tried limiting the number of short-term rentals. That seems to be kind of a pattern. What they found with, by limiting the short-term rentals, that they would not lose the round, year-round population. Other places who have tried the short-term rentals and didn't put things in place have found that the year-round population decreased, because now they had a lot of people buying them up real quick, and the locals, it took out a lot of the housing for local people. So we really need to look into that and maybe look at some of the best practices that they've used in the past as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cullum?
Yes, I'd like to address the short-term rental—
Yes, I'd like to address the short-term rental idea. The Committee for Zoning, which I chair, meets previous to this meeting over in the little conference room over there, and we are taking the topic very, very seriously. I just want it to be known that no voice is louder than another voice. If you happen to be a business interest in town, we're listening to you, yes. And if you're a neighbor that feels that their rights are being violated, we're listening to you, yes. We're listening to everybody, and that's why we're going to the civic associations and asking leadership of those associations to provide us feedback in addition to the survey that we gave out and had a bunch of responses on. But we are very serious about forming policy that helps our neighborhoods stay safe and helps our community stay happy and so that everyone enjoys their home and has privacy and quietude. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that although we did reach out to Ryan Castle, he was in our room today over there, he's been in front of this council many times from the Cape and Islands Association of Realtors, yes, his opinion's important to me because when you formulate legislation, it needs to be circumspect. And so we don't take it lightly. We don't take Mr. Crowe's comments lightly either, and we plan on working toward a solution that will benefit everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I don't want to go over what we've already talked about, but to assure, I was late coming in because somebody held me up at the committee meeting, really, really concerned about looking at the regulations that currently exist for short-term housing. I don't think that there's an appetite to increase anything over the regulations that clearly spell out what a single-family residential house can do. So I don't think we're out to create more zoning that allows for more places, short-term rentals, but at the same time to look at what regulations are currently in place that helps to control and to make the situation compatible for each and every neighborhood within the community. Time to lighten it up a little bit. So for my, Adam, we are tonight having a joint meeting. Okay, thank you. School Department and Town. So I was, okay, and then the other thing is Mr. Bo Chu. I want to thank you. What you don't realize perhaps is the effect that you have had on us. You represent, right now, people who are living outside in the cold. You represent people who have a dream of living inside. Now, unfortunately, not everybody who is homeless right now, who is suffering from some addiction or some mental health issue, is willing to come in even if we can find a place for them. But I know that your expression is very heartfelt, and I think you're kind of the poster person, if you will, that simply wants a roof over their head and a place to call home. So I do thank you for sharing that expression with our town council because in doing it, you also have recognized that this town council is very, very compassionate and very, very sensitive about homelessness. So I'm not encouraging you to be a routine stand-up singer for us. I just want to acknowledge what you've done, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hebert. Any other councillors? Councilor Schnep?
Thank you very much. Just to follow Councilor Hebert's humor, Adam, I believe that we may be at a point where we need to look at some of the economic impact of the legal right to have businesses regarding cannabis, marijuana. And I know that we've talked about that here as a council, that when we passed a very limited expansion of zoning for cannabis, that we would return to this issue. And I think we will, with new leadership, we will take a peek. Thanks.
Anyone else? I just want to take a quick moment just to kind of underscore Councilor Beedenbender's comments. I think a placeholder is an apt description. Nothing has been planned for that site, and I can assure everyone here, and I know the council feels the same way, there'll be several years of public discussion input over any location in that area, whether it's Mother's Park or 310 Main Street or somewhere else. But there's going to be years of public discussion. And Mother's Park is not automatic. Anytime there's a park designation, as we've talked about at a couple meetings, involves the state and Article 97 filings. So it's an arduous process. It can take several years, to be honest with you. And you don't know what the outcome's going to be. So again, it's keeping options open, taking, you know, opportunity presented itself, but I can assure everyone here that there'll be years of public input for that area. And it was just a vote to purchase, it was not a vote to build a pump station. And we have some of the best professionals in this town, our DPW and our engineers and staff, put them up against anybody in the state, they're amazing. And I think as we roll out, you know, this wastewater project over the next several years, I mean, we're just getting started. You're really going to see the skill set and the knowledge and the thoroughness of their work going forward. They don't do it for the glory or the pats on the back, but these are premier people, and we're very lucky to have all of them, so. With that, I'm going to move on to Town Manager Communications and Manager Mark Els.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. And congratulations to re-elected councillors and welcome new councillors. I look forward to working with you as we move forward on the many issues that we manage here in the town of Barnstable. My Town Manager's update for the period of November 8th through November 21st. We are proceeding with the tasks in the updated budget action calendar for FY 2021. The proposed calendar year fee hearing was held on November 12th. The proposed fees are posted on the town website homepage under the "In News" section as "Proposed Fee Hearing Notice." I plan to approve the proposed fees on November 22nd pending any further comment. We received one comment at the public hearing, and I have received no other comments relevant to the proposed fees. There is a scheduled joint meeting workshop with the school committee to review the financial condition of the town and a presentation on the tax levy shifting options for setting the FY 2020 tax rate later in this evening's agenda. We want to provide the town council with this information, relevant to the tax setting. We want to provide the town council with this information prior to the annually required tax classification vote that is scheduled for December 5th. The votes include a decision on the percentage for a residential exemption, which can be a range of 0% to 35%, and whether or not to split the tax rate between the residential and commercial classes of property. We've had a 20% residential exemption in place since FY 2006, and the council has elected not to split the tax rate since FY 2007. All of our financial information, budgets, capital, operating, are all available on our website. On Tuesday, November 12th, I met with Vineyard Wind to discuss the schedule for their Phase 1 project and the addition of a Phase 3 project to our community host agreement. Vineyard Wind anticipates commencing Phase 1 construction in the fall of 2020. Their engineer and construction supervisor continue to meet with our staff. Vineyard Wind requested an opportunity to provide the town council an update regarding Phase 1 this coming spring. They're always available, certainly, for questions, but they'd like to come in because I think they'll have a better idea of where they are in the permitting process. Probably April, I think, is what they were suggesting to us, but that's certainly at your discretion. Vineyard Wind also provided draft language for modifications to the community host agreement to include a Phase 3 of their projects. As you remembered, I was authorized by town council to proceed with the host agreement for Phase 1 and Phase 2. I came back to you and let you know that Vineyard Wind had inquired whether we could have discussions of Phase 3. I was authorized to proceed again with those discussions, and we are proceeding, and they have given me draft language at this point. I will continue those discussions, and I will keep you briefed as we progress toward any modification of the current host agreement. Under Massachusetts general laws, the Department of Environmental Protection develops and maintains a comprehensive statewide master plan for solid waste management, which the agency updates on a 10-year planning cycle. On September 27th, Mass DEP issued a draft 2030 solid waste master plan for public comment. Mass DEP has scheduled five public hearings on the draft solid waste master plan and will accept public comment through December 6, 2019. Our staff attended the Southeast Regional Meeting on November 19th, and we're preparing comments on the draft plan. I know Councilor Schnep had asked me, you know, my views last meeting. I went back and reviewed it again. It's very general in nature. Most of what they're saying are goals. The last 10 years, they didn't achieve what they had hoped to achieve over the 10-year period. I don't even know that they made it halfway to what they had hoped. They're really looking by 2050 to see some significant waste stream reductions. So what our staff is doing in their draft comments is really looking, because some of it's about residential-type waste that a municipality might manage, some of it is about commercial waste that are actually not controlled directly by us in Barnstable, and then some are about the facilities that are out there and the way that they will process materials. Some of it's about the capacity for disposal of waste, and therefore, if those capacities aren't there for future waste streams, that presents a whole nother problem for us, and what will communities do with that waste if we don't have anywhere in the current market to put it? And on top of that, we have the very dynamic and changing recycling market. So we're looking at it from that perspective. We will have comments submitted. I will share them with you. And if you have any questions, more than happy to have myself or our DPW staff sit down and try to work with you if there's any aspect of it you would like to incorporate, you know, broader comments. Last week, DPW staff held public meetings to discuss moving the Department of Public Works and the Centerville, Ostermo, Marston Mills Public Drinking Water Interconnection Facility from the corner of Finney's Lane and Longview Drive to a vacant lawn on 45 Longview Drive. And I've attached that notice. I did because I've had a lot of questions about this one. When you're coming down route, I'm sorry, down Finney's Lane, you'll probably notice it if you're heading south on Finney's Lane over on the left-hand side, and it looks like a large metal box-type trailer. And people, since we have installed it, have been asking councillors and public, okay, when are you going to go to a permanent structure? Well, we're going to a permanent structure. And Public Works was taking comments from the neighborhood, and they hope to have a final design and bid document in place this year, go out to bid, and hopefully make these modifications in the spring. So please take a look at it, please share any comments, or if you have any residents that are reaching out, please direct them to myself or Director Santos. On July 2nd and again on August 27th, I sent letters to the Secretary of the Executive Office of Administration and Finance regarding the state bond bill that requested $1.6 million in funding for improvements to the armory. On October 16th, I met with Rep. Crocker and Senator Seer and staff from Administration and Finance to discuss the merits of the project and the release of the funds. On November 20th, I discussed the status of the response with Senator Seer's office. I'm still awaiting a final response. The Administration and Finance said they'd get back to me within 30 days. I waited 30 days, plus or minus a day. And I'm waiting for an answer on this. We're completing our hazmat cleanup at this point. We're ready to move to the first phase of renovation to that facility, but determining whether we're going to get any of this $1.6 million or not will determine how we proceed with this project. So I'm telling them it's shovel-ready, I'm asking for the release of the funds. If not, will they work with us on other funds? And I await that response. And I will continue weekly to reach out to them. I'd like to get an answer by the end of the calendar year. On November 20th, Suffolk University held an informational session regarding their announcement of a Masters of Public Administration degree program on Cape Cod that will commence in the fall of 2020, and I've attached the announcement. The MPA classes will be held at Barnstable Town Hall, right in this room, over five semesters on Saturday beginning in September of 2020. The Cape Cod MPA program is limited to a one-time cohort of 15 to 20 students who have successfully completed the certificate in local government and leadership management course sponsored jointly by Suffolk's Mocley Center for Public Management and the Massachusetts Municipal Association and hosted here by the town of Barnstable. We've actually had 20 employees come through that certificate program, so they are all eligible for this particular MPA program. Additional students may be admitted at the discretion of the MPA program director, so they will accept students who haven't gone through the certificate program. But we're trying to see 15 to 20 students who have come through that program, not all Barnstables, we probably anticipate maybe five a year, being able to participate this. I will tell you that Barnstable hosted this MPA program in 2008 with great success here, once again, in this room. You know, we had graduates like Mark Milne and Lynn Poyant and, you know, Madeline Noonan and others who went through the program and obtained their MBA. And for the most part, we're able to do it right here. So we hope that we have that level of success working with Suffolk on this program. That concludes my portion of the update, and I'm going to conclude with Dan Santos. For certainly the new councillors, we've been bringing forward updates at the second meeting every month relevant to our progress on the comprehensive water management plan. It is the second meeting, and Dan Santos will give you an update. If you have any questions, it may be before I sit, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Why don't we do the questions for you first and then have Dan come up? Any questions for the town manager? No, you were very thorough. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Schnep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for the excellent report. On the Vineyard Wind matter, I recall that we did negotiate the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. I believe the Phase 2 was awarded to a different contractor?
Yeah, I'm not really clear on that yet. So it was reported that that occurred, but I'm not clear from Vineyard Wind on whether Phase, the Phase 2 isn't linked to a specific grant area. So that's what, Attorney McLaughlin is discussing those specifics with them.
Okay. And the update in terms of the commencing Phase 1 in fall of 2020, is that assuming all the federal review process goes through?
Yes.
Okay. Is it moving, or is it?
I think it's moving slowly. Yeah, they're very concerned about, depending on what happens next election year, they're very concerned about how decisions will be made. That's what they've said to me, but I don't want to speak for them. I don't know that, you know, that permitting process they do, so that's why I thought it would be good if they could come in, because it will impact decisions we make relevant to proceeding with certainly the installation of the sewer. We don't want to be opening up that road and then closing it and reopening it. We want to do all of our subsurface work at the same time.
So that was my follow-up, that you're postponing any of that work until this is...
Correct. And I think if we don't receive news that they will progress with construction in the fall of 2020, we collectively should have a discussion on how we would like to proceed. Typically, if we go in and we do a road, if we put a final course on, we're not looking for that road to be reopened for at least five years. So we want to really think through, plus, we will incur more cost relevant to construction because they were bearing the cost of much of the construction relevant, or about a third of the construction relevant to the, you know, roadway.
One more question on the MPA program. Does the town provide any tuition reimbursement to employees that might...
Yes, we do have a program for those who have come through the certificate, and what I'll do is I'll have Bill Cole put it together. And we receive a percentage discount for being the host. We provide a subsidy in part to our employees who participate. They have an obligation to us for a set number of years after we subsidize a portion of it, and if they depart before that, then they owe. And I think that's about it, but I'll get the details of it and share. We did it last time, it worked successfully. I think the program runs about, total cost, I think it's about $30,000, which is actually, it's a lot of money, but it's certainly, and when you go out there and you look at what it costs to go to college, that's a pretty cost-effective MPA degree.
Thank you.
Councilor Rap Grisetti?
Thank you. Just to follow up on Vineyard Wind, they have been providing info sessions at the Centerville Library, and I think there's one final one of the year. There was one tonight, but there's one final one in December, I think, maybe on the 16th. There's one final one in December, I think maybe on the 16th, from 4:00 to 6:00, somewhere. I think something on that. So they have been keeping us informed. I know you did not put this on your announcement, but at last night's, and this is a little, it's pertinent because we're going to be sharing the ideas with the school committee. But the Katuut Elementary School was given up for control to back to the town. And I'm hoping that that asset can be discussed with rigor with the Asset Management and Advisory Committee as to its future. And I know the constituents in Precinct 7 are very anxious about that. So I'm looking forward to your direction.
I'll certainly speak with your leadership about assigning it to a committee. I can assure you that we will work hand-in-hand with our community and certainly the village of Katuut on this issue. I've had a very good working relationship with the superintendent relevant to this decision. We've kind of preempted some of the evaluation of the building by being able to go in there. And we have an architect that will do the evaluation already of the structure. So that's one of the things I wanted in hand, to know, okay, we're being given a building, and what's its condition, and from there, what types of uses might there be or not be? And then proceed with our decision-making. I hope that'll be done within the coming, you know, weeks, a couple of months probably by the time we're done. But weeks certainly, so that we can sit down. I'd like to brief the council on where we are and then go out to the community and discuss what we'll do with this property that's been given back. It's actually always been a municipal property. But it was under the school's control when it was a school, and now it's been handed back to us. I haven't received the formal notice yet. That's why I didn't report it tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And then we'll welcome Dan Santos, our Public Works Director. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, town councilors. I'm Dan Santos, Director of Public Works. And special welcome and congratulations to the new councilors. And one thing I wanted to do, and I've done in the past at the new council, is to offer up, if you want to come and visit Public Works and learn about all we do, it's a pretty big operation. And you might be surprised at some of the things we get into. And I'd also be happy to do kind of a windshield tour of your precinct to go through some of the public infrastructure that we have and update you on projects in your precinct. So feel free to contact me and let me know if you'd like to do that. And that also goes, of course, for anyone else who wants to have another tour and enjoy the company of the Public Works Director and a tour of their precinct. Another thing I wanted to mention was councillor Rappiore said he brought up the Vineyard Wind office hours. The final date for office hours at Centerville Library is December 19th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Just want to give you a brief update on the wastewater efforts in Barnstable. So since September, which was the last update, we have submitted the draft comprehensive wastewater management plan to the town council. That was presented on October 10th was the technical plan, the engineering aspects. And on October 3rd, Director Mark Millen presented the financial plan. On November 7th, just several weeks ago, the council approved release of the plan to the regulatory agencies, which is the next step in the process of having the final updated comprehensive wastewater management plan approved by the MEPA Office and the Department of Environmental Protection. The modeling that we undertake, or had to undertake, to make sure that our plan is going to do what it said it's going to do. In other words, will we meet the water quality standards in our estuaries that we are required to? And that modeling effort was undertaken, and the results are that, yes. We will, based on that work and our proposed plan, meet those water quality standards. So that was a check-in-the-box that was very important for us to get. We, in the last six weeks or so between, after we announced the plan and presented it to the town council, we conducted four Barnstable Regional Public Meetings in a number of the villages. And I think those were very successful in providing information about the plan and answering questions that participants and those who came, citizens, to understand the plan and ask their questions and give us some thoughts about, you know, what they think and some input that we certainly appreciate. And we're working with our Channel 18, our folks here, to continue to develop outreach materials. And they've been doing a good job in incorporating some of the issues and little vignettes. And they'll continue to do that as a means of providing information about the comprehensive wastewater management plan to our citizens. So the review of the plan, we've met with the Department of Environmental Protection staff. You may recall, I've brought up in the past, that they actually sat with us during the RAC days and as part of our creating the plan. So they were with us lockstep, you know, right along for the last several years. But we finally, we gave them the plan, the draft plan, had them review it. And honestly, their review resulted in some, you know, proofreading-type comments. They really had no significant issues at all with the plan. So I anticipate their endorsement at DEP. Another aspect of that is we hired a consultant to go through the draft plan that does these plans for other communities, just to do a QAQC check, make sure that, you know, we've checked all the boxes. There's another set of technical eyes on it. That work's been completed, and we're incorporating their comments into the plan. We'll be meeting on November 26th with the Cape Cod Commission staff to go through. Again, this was a, we're trying to give all the agencies and entities that are going to review this kind of an informal chance to discuss with us. Take a look at the draft. Tell us what we think. You know, don't throw big issues at us in writing after we submit it. But if there's something we can correct before we submit it, let's do that. So we're meeting with the Cape Cod Commission. As I mentioned, we've met with the Department of Environmental Protection. And in mid-December, we're going to meet with the MEPA staff, which is the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. And they do the environmental reviews and whether they require environmental notification or environmental assessment, that's the work that they do. So those meetings will continue. We continue to work on Western Solutions. The Joint Base Cape Cod is one that the council funded for us to look at. And as you know, we submitted a proposal, along with Converge, to the National Guard Bureau in Washington to take over and operate the wastewater treatment plant at the current Joint Base Cape Cod. We continued discussions. We haven't heard, by the way, on the, whether that was successful or not. The latest I heard today was that they are still in their process of reviewing the proposal. They've asked some questions and done a little back and forth, but they have not made a decision. It's anticipated by the end of the year. I'll let you know about that when we hear. We continue to work with the Department of Environmental Protection. They are very interested in a regional wastewater solution that includes the four upper Cape towns, the base and the town of Barnstable. In fact, we met today and sandwiched on that and with representatives from each of those towns and the EPA and to go through where we stand with a regional solution. Sampson's Island dredging, that's in Katuut. That work has been underway for several weeks, and it will continue until it's completed. Our deadline for completion is January 15th by permit. But I anticipate will be done well before that, as long as the weather cooperates and equipment cooperates. But it's going well. Mill Pond and Marsinsts Mills, where we are proposing to dredge Mill Pond as a means of treating nitrogen before it gets into the Three Bays system. This is just an update that we continue to work with the state and the Massachusetts National Heritage and Endangered Species Program, who have concern about what's called a bridal shiner in that water body. And we're still trying to work through issues with them to be able to do this dredging. This will have, it's anticipated, a very significant impact in nitrogen reduction in the Three Bays. So we're working hard to try to do whatever we need to do to mitigate any impact so that we can do this work. And I'll update you further as we get more on that. And the Marsinsts Rivers River System, which is above the Mill Pond, is work that we are doing with the State Department of Environmental Protection, the EPA, the Nature Conservancy, Barnstable Clean Water Coalition, where we want to install alternative treatment technologies, both septic systems and other in-situ treatment technologies to prove their effectiveness and their efficacy in treating nitrogen. And our hope is that, as I've explained several times in the past, is that the more effective we can be with alternatives, that's the less sewer we have to do in the future and hopefully lop off large portions of our Phase 3 work at what could be a significant cost savings to the town. So what are the next steps? We are going to continue our public outreach through the Channel 18 work, through updating the council, and as people require or request meetings. We're happy to meet anywhere, anytime. We're ready to go. And so upon request, we'll do meetings and gatherings, small, large, whatever. We're open to anything. We're going to continue to update the plan based on the comments we've received. And before the end of the year, we're going to submit to the regulatory agencies. We'll continue our work in pursuing the alternatives, as I just mentioned, in particular with respect to the Marsinsts Mills River System. And then finally, we continue on working on the preliminary design and final designs and work at our treatment plant on effluent disposal options and alternatives, as well as locations. And that work will continue in earnest for the next 30 years. But it's definitely underway. So that's my update for this month. Have any questions, be happy to try to answer them for you.
Thank you, Dan. Any councilors? Councillor Schnapp?
Thank you. Thank you, Dan, for your report. Could you give some summary statements of the feedback you received at the four different meetings that you've had so far?
Sure. I think there was a lot of interest in ponds. Okay, so the focus of our wastewater management plan, based on the requirements and the regulations, is on nutrients to our coastal estuaries, so it's nitrogen. Ponds are impacted by another nutrient, phosphorus. However, we did look at that. We actually did a pond evaluation. We understand the condition of the ponds in Barnstable, and we will continue to work to improve the situation there. The problem is not all a septic system issue and a wastewater issue with respect to ponds. So there are other things, like stormwater management, that we have to work very carefully on over time to reduce the impacts. And a new program with the EPA called the MS4 Program requires the town to do certain things to identify these issues and to take action to mitigate them over the next several years. And the council has funded us to do that work, to start that preliminary work, particularly in the identification. And some of the things that they require are just public education, street sweeping. A lot of contaminants, particularly solids, get into water bodies from sand on the road. And street sweeping is something that will be required on a frequent basis. So ponds, kind of the biggest question, I think. And a lot of it is just, you know, why you're doing this or why that. But I think there was a lot of general understanding about the approach when people heard about it, kind of souped to nuts. And I wasn't at all the meetings. I was at half of them. And I heard a lot of positive comments. I think people are very supportive of the town's efforts to solve our water quality problems. And I think that's good. So it was generally, you know, overall, I think, a positive experience for us.
Do you see us amending the comprehensive wastewater management plan to address the pond issue? Or will that be a separate planning process?
I think it'll be both. I think that because what we're doing with the plan is we're going to do a five-year look. So we're going to keep looking at it. It's kind of an iterative plan. As we've said, the plan is, it's a point in time. It's where we're at today. But as the ponds become important or become more degraded, that'll rise to the forefront. And in the five-year addressing, we'll modify. The plan can be modified at any time. But we're also looking at specifically the pond issues. The manager has asked me to work with our natural resources folks and start specifically to look at that, look at some baseline monitoring with the UMass Dartmouth folks who do a lot of that work. So we'll continue that work.
Interestingly, I think the cyanobacteria blooms this summer raised people's attention to our sewerine more than anything. And so any time we can marry, even if they're not completely connected, I understand there's different nutrients at work. It does get people's attention, and the more we can educate, not only to what we're planning to do with infrastructure, but steps that we can take as individuals to reduce nutrients going into our waterways.
Yes, absolutely. Fertilizer being one hasn't been said, but that's obviously an important one.
Councillor Beanbender?
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Dan. This is just in relationship to outreach, and I commend your team for doing the Channel 18 piece and that level of outreach. What I am thinking about longer term is how do we get that sort of laser focus in a community where we're going to actually be doing project work? So for example, Centerville Main Street, north of, you know, or I should say, you know, sort of at that intersection, you know, heading up. So it's north of the South Main Street section, right? So you go up Centerville Main Street, and we know that there's a main spine that's going to go up there. To a degree, the outreach that you're doing works great in a general sense and generally getting the word out there. But what I have been finding over the past two years is that, because we saw it with Vineyard Wind as well, and they were exhaustive in their outreach. And we still had people coming forward going, hey, wait a second. You pulled a fast one. We didn't know. And there is an onus of responsibility on the public to pay attention, without a question. But this, I think where it's going to grab people's attention is when they potentially start seeing big machinery starting coming into town or a situation where the town buys a piece of property or starts discussing a pump station. So what I'm just trying to wrap my head around is how do we, in a systematic way, moving forward, hone in on specific communities in advance of them being affected? But obviously, with a 30-year plan, I mean, we're not going to jump into a community 10 years before the pipe is going to go in. But there has to be a trigger point at someplace where we go, okay, we're starting to think about this more seriously. Now we need to reach out to the civic association or the library group or whatever it is. So I think, you know, and maybe your plan includes that, and so, you know, just let me know. But if it doesn't, I think we need to weave in this sort of, you know, community-specific outreach when it's appropriate and determining what those trigger points are for that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I have given some thought to that. And so far, it's been a very general program. But I agree, as you've said, as we get into more specifics, then people will be more interested, I think, because it's in their neighborhood. But the last thing we're going to do is have people not know anything until bulldozers come in their neighborhood. I'm a big advocate of citizen participation. And what, the place that I think it's appropriate is we usually do a process where we do a conceptual design, and then we do a final design, and then we go from there. I think at the conceptual design stage, it's very appropriate that we would bring the conceptual plan to the community, working with both the village associations and the precinct councilors and to bring, present, put the plans out, not have a big formal presentation, but a kind of a roll-up-your-sleeve section and say, here's what we're thinking, and here's why. Because justify what we're proposing, and what do you think? And there's an opportunity for that deliberation, that back and forth, and some cost savings, making changes earlier in the system. So totally on board. That's what I'm thinking. If you think otherwise, let me know, but we're open to anything. But I think that might be an appropriate way to proceed.
Councillor Neri?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dan, for your update. I'm always in awe of the number of projects that your department has going on at any given time. It truly is unbelievable, and thank you for your stewardship. I just have one question. I just have one question. The CWMP meeting, I think you said it was November 26th, is that correct?
With the Cape Cod Commission, yes.
Is that a public meeting? Can public attend that meeting?
Well, it's basically a session where we're going to go over their comments on our draft. So, it's meant to be, it's in their offices.
Okay.
It wasn't intended to be a public meeting.
Time and place is what I was wondering.
Yeah.
So, it's at their offices?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Raprasetti?
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Always, I like the second meeting in the month to discuss this. As always, I appreciate an email of this update, if you could just send the PDF to the council.
Absolutely.
Also, did, I want to make sure that all of the council, including the new councilors, are aware of the proposal that was submitted by the town on Joint Base Cape Cod. I'm not sure if the entire council has seen that, but I think we should all be able to have that information. With regards to stormwater, and Councilor Schnep's, and your response to her as far as stormwater, that's certainly an unfunded mandate imposed upon us from the state, but whatever we can do to mitigate that, I mean, we have to do it. They're telling us we have to do it. So, and I know we've been successful in grants to help offset a lot of that, those issues. You know, just following up on Councilor Beedenbender's concern about community outreach, I know, and it's a little premature, but Chatham has a very good interactive page. I'm sure you're familiar with it, and it goes street by street, and it tells you what's happening, the day, you know, it's very, very good. So, it's something maybe we should take a look at when we get into the, into the project itself, so. But that was it. Thank you so much.
Councilor Cullen?
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to make a note about what Councilor Beedenbender and Councilor Raprasetti were saying. You know, I find in general that there's, there are so few people that turn out for our local elections. There's so little civic engagement in general, that it's almost like, you know, we're using an atom bomb to solve, like to kill a housefly, or whatever that whole thing is. I mean, I think, I just wish we could have more of a targeted approach to get more people more involved in their local government. And I don't know what department that comes from, but in overall civic engagement thing, we have all the tools. We have Channel 18. I know it's not, you know, any Comcast channel, or it's not on Netflix, or whatever, but like, we have Channel 18 as a method to communicate with people. We have a new webpage, yet we fail in getting the message to the people whose lives are affected by our infrastructure changes. And it concerns me. I don't know how to, how to start a, or if we should start some sort of a campaign on civic engagement and how to get that off the ground, but I think when we have a public works project that's 30 years in the make, or 30 years to be completed in front of us, and we have, you know, outrage about 310 Main Street in Centerville, and just, it seems almost like a really negative view of your department and what you guys are doing by some people. I don't think that the message is getting through how talented the staff in Barnstable is, and that all of the plans are for the greater good. And I just think that as a council, if we could focus on maybe wrapping our arms around community members that don't see the value in attending a meeting, don't see the value in picking up the Cape Cod Times, you know, maybe only look at Facebook once in a while, but don't like, don't have Barnstable stuff except for the police department, because then it's the negative message that gets perpetrated, right? Which, I just wish we had a better way to get a positive message out. So, I invite anyone and everyone in the audience and at home to think about that, and if you come up with a way, please contact me, because I think it's important that, you know, we understand as a community that we're working for the greater good, that, you know, a billion-dollar bill is not just because we're bored and we need something to do. It's to preserve what we have, and it's the best method that we know of to move forward based upon your credentials and your staff's credentials, and Mark Els's credentials, and elected officials. And so, I just wish there was a better way to embrace the community as a whole and have them understand that we're working toward a positive, better Barnstable. I just, just a thought.
Well, I think that's a common problem across our country. And if you look at data, and there's lots of papers and books written about the people's mistrust of government and their lack of participation in government, my thinking is that we can try different things. And I think if people, it's a matter of getting people engaged and participating rather than just listening, right, and educating or informing, those are important. But if people feel like they have a real role, I think that will go a long way to start getting more people involved, and that's why I think getting involvement at this conceptual stage and getting input, real input, having a dialogue, is important. So, I guess my response would be, we have to try different things. There is no, there's no fantasy and no magic bullet on civic engagement. If you look around the country, there's success stories, there's failures, whatever, you know, it's like, it's, whatever works in Barnstable will work in Barnstable, and maybe you've got to hit people where they live, right? So, a certain, a certain segment of the population uses social media, so we should have a social media presence. We need to have a television presence. We need to have the old meeting where we're going back and forth presence. It really needs to be a multi-pronged approach. So, this is something we think a lot about, I think a lot about, I'm passionate about, and we will, we're going to work at it.
It just feels like, you know, when people, people sense that when they see an item like what happened with 310 Main Street on the agenda, and it passes, the worst is assumed every single time. And it's, I just wish we could get ahead of that and engage people way before, like, way before we're even conceptually designing. I wish people had an interest in their neighborhood. I wish they, I wish they would engage and ask questions and be thoughtful and care, you know? In this last election, I mean, there were 120 people, I think, that voted in Precinct 9. There were 120 people that voted in my precinct, or something like that, too, but it was just me. But, and in a contested election, excuse me, there were 125 people that voted. And there's roughly 3,000 registered voters in each precinct. There's just got to be a way. We're missing it. There's got to be a way. So, that's all. Those are just my thoughts. Thank you. I appreciate all your efforts, by the way. Thank you.
Councilor Dagwan?
Thank you, Mr. Santos, for your presentation tonight. Also, maybe we ought to consider, I get a lot of comments from what we call "snow bunnies", that, you know, they're away during the winter, and then they come back, and they'll, you know, why are they tearing up, you know, Finney's Way to put sewer pipes or whatever in? And so, I think we need to find some way to really connect with that group as well, because I tend to get more concerns from that group population of citizens. Thank you.
Any other questions? Council Heaver?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Chairman. To follow up on Councilor Cullen's comments, I think it's imperative, but there are, you know, all the techniques that we talked about, Channel 18 and media, social media, but, you know, we have two newspapers represented at every single council meeting. We have the Cape Cod Times that sits here through the whole meeting, and also the Barnstable Patriot. And so, I think that, for instance, they don't get a copy of the manager's report. And so, we have to make it easy for them to capture what's going on here. And then, when they get excited about what they're reading about, they can handpick and say, wow, the public really needs to know about this, as soon as they get it, and then they can do some more research. We could create an excitement about what we're trying to do here. We all have to do this together. The whole town's got to work together if we're going to make this work at all. So, I think the idea of some type of a campaign, that what we must do, what we can do, and what we will do, all together, you know, really can make a difference. So, things that get the town engaged and the people. It's not easy, as you've expressed, and as Councilor Cullen has expressed, but it's certainly worth a try, and we can do some simple things to try to get more people involved. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Any other councilors? All right, thank you, Dan. Appreciate it, as always.
Thank you.
All right, I'd like to move on to the minutes. Councilor Neary, could you please handle that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to accept the minutes of November 7th, 2019, of the town council meeting, as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of approving the town council meeting minutes of November 17th, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstention.
One abstention. All right, we're going to move on to communications. Any councilors have any announcements? Councilor Raprasetti?
Yeah, I do want to sum my condolences to the family of Richard Aliberty. He served on the golf committee, and he passed away recently. He was a very strong advocate and the promoter of the first tee program in the town of Barnstable. He was also a very strong advocate for the health of the Santuot River. So, I'm going to miss seeing Mr. Aliberty. He was a good friend and very loyal to the town and the efforts of our community. So, thank you, Mr. Aliberty.
Thank you for that, counselor. Councilor Beedenbender?
Hey there, thanks. Let's do it again. I wanted to make one announcement, and that is the Centerville Stroll is taking place on December 8th. Yep, it's right around the corner. December 8th starts at, oh my goodness, what time does it start at? I think it starts at 4:00 PM. But, so anyway, the stroll is on Main Street. We shut down Main Street. There's carolers, there is, there's wonderful food, there are, there are displays at the museum. We have Santa Claus hanging out at one of the houses for the kids, and it's just a wonderful family event. The Country Store is open, and they always beautifully decorate, and we also have our David Kelly House that is beautifully decorated on Main Street. So, I welcome everyone to come visit our little village, because it is quite a charming little stroll. I did want to, if you don't mind, I did want to make a mention about Community Preservation Committee, because there's an agenda item that's coming up tonight that we're going to discuss regarding the Unitarian Church. And because we have some new councilors on the dais, I thought it might be good just to touch base real quickly on CPC and what we're working on and what we're thinking about for those, and, you know, if you know this, I apologize, but I will just briefly state that the CPC Act was enacted to assist municipalities and the Commonwealth in the preservation of the following core interests: acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of affordable housing, open space, and land for recreational use. It also acquires and preserves historic resources, and rehabs and restores affordable housing acquired or created with CPA funds, and rehabs and restores land for recreational use acquired or created with CPA funds. It is in funded, we get funding in part from the state, but also from our deeds, our fees from our deeds. So, you know, we have these three areas that we focus on. We are required to spend 10% every year, 10% on housing, 10% on open space, and 10% on recreational land. And then, the other 70% can be spent how the committee feels is necessary. Currently, the way the CPC works is that we accept applications on a rolling basis. So, it's kind of a first-come, first-served sort of system, and we are currently working on looking at how we're doing business, because what has started to happen is that we have been getting quite, quite a bevy of inquiries and proposals for historic, I'm not even so sure I want to call it renovations. It's sometimes far more extensive than just merely a renovation, but we are getting a lot of requests from, from the historical places that we have in this town for various critical repairs, updates, what have you. And what is starting to happen is that the needs are outstripping what the committee can reasonably fund, or possibly even fund. We were looking at one proposal, for example, where what is being requested, the amount actually exceeds the value of the building itself. So, we are running into issues where we really need to take another hard look at how we review properties, what the criteria is going to be. Do we have a certain cap on things? So, there's, right now, we're in a, in a major process of reviewing how business is done. But, that said, one of the issues that came up at the CPC committee earlier this afternoon was, we're really, what really needs to happen is the town council, it would be very helpful for the town council, in this new phase, to help provide some guidance to the committee as to where it thinks we should be prioritizing that 70% portion of the funds. So, you know, it would, it would just really help for the committee to be strategic in its decisions as it moves forward. So, I just wanted to leave that with you for consideration as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other councilors? Council Bogan?
Thank you. Counselor Beedenbender beat me to it, but the 50th Annual Ostrville Open House and Christmas Stroll is on Friday, December 6th. I think it's 6 o'clock, although there may be some activities before that. Gail Nightingale, who's the president of the association, goes all out, and it is a rather magical event, so I encourage you all to attend.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Councilor Dagwan?
Thank you, I was going to say, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Eric. Counselor, just thank you. Okay? Just thank you. I wanted to, I was at the Recreation Commission's meeting, and it was brought up that the very high school is organizing a rolling rally parade, and they're looking for people to participate, to volunteer. It's going to be the day before Thanksgiving. It's a Wednesday, the 27th. The walk is about 1.6 of a mile, and it starts at 12 o'clock, and they're meeting at the high school. So, if there's anyone, and they're doing Main Street, excuse me, they're meeting at Main Street. So, they're trying to get everybody rallied up for the big football game the next day and whatnot, and just in the spirit of Thanksgiving and in the spirit of the Red Raiders here in town. So, if you have time, come out, and they're asking our councilors, they're asking school committee members as well, to participate in this. So, if you have some time on Wednesday, please come out and support them. And I just wanted to mention that the Hyannis Civic Association, or the, is also having a stroll, okay? It starts, it's going to be a Main Street stroll, but we also are having a boat parade on the same day. It's December the 7th. This year, they're sponsoring a trolley that will take people from Main Street and bring them down to Ocean Street for the boat parade as well. So, the trolley will be running all day long with all the events that will be occurring on December the 7th for the Hyannis Main Street Stroll and the Harbor Boat Parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Levesque?
Thank you, Counsel Steinholder. I would also like to announce an additional Christmas stroll. This is in Marston's Mills, the newly designed, renovated, and beautified Marston's Mills. And they're just finishing up the work now, doing the raised sidewalks, lines, I'll let the, she'll be wrapped up by, hopefully by next Wednesday. And so, it'll be a great time to showcase the new streetlights and all the different improvements that have taken place, that worked so hard to put together, a long time coming. And the village is very excited for this. And again, this is Saturday, December 7th, and what we try to do is squeeze it in before it interferes with any other strolls, so it's actually from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. So, please attend and come and see all the great things that are happening there in the village of Marston's Mills. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Counselor Steinholder. West Barnstable also has their annual tree lighting that will be on Sunday, December 1st, at 5:00. We'll have Trumpeter and We'll have trumpeter and handbell choir from, at the Village Green. From there, they go to, the group goes to the meeting house where there are traditional carols and the Christmas story, and that's followed by good cheer and refreshments at the Jenkins Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
No, we're good with all the strolls. It's the blessing of many villages, right?
All right. I did have an announcement to make, but we did the Town Manager Evaluation. This is required for the council to complete each calendar year. And the previous council, it made sense, obviously, for them to conduct this evaluation. So, we had that done prior to the election. And then the scores were tallied to have a final report. And the Town Council, I mean, the Town Manager has scored on eight sections. I'll just briefly read them off. Town Council Relations, Personnel Management, Financial Management, General Management, Community and Interdepartmental Relations, Public Relations and Communications, Relations with Federal, State, and Other Governmental Units, and Personal and Professional Growth of the Town Manager. So, each counselor scores these sections. They're totaled, and we work on a scale of 1 to 5, where 3 is meets job expectations, 4 is exceeds job expectations, and 5 is outstanding. So, I'm very happy to report, once again, our Town Manager has scored in every section between exceeds job expectations and outstanding on every section with an overall score of 4.5. So, I just want to congratulate him again on another year, a well-done, of fantastic work. Can't say how lucky we are to have Mark Els at the helm as the Town Manager, and I just want to congratulate him again on a job well-done. Without any other announcements, I'd like to invite our School Committee up, and we're going to have our joint, our annual joint meeting with the School Committee. So, I'd invite the members up to take a seat at the dais. We'll take just a one-minute recess for everyone to get settled.
Counselors, if we could come back to the dais, please? All right, I think we got everyone back and in their places, sitting behind the proper name tags, hopefully. So, I want to welcome the Barnstable School Committee here tonight. And before we start this meeting, I want to turn it over to the Chair of the Barnstable School Committee, Mike Judge. Open your section of the meeting.
So, as Chair of the Barnstable School Committee, I will open up the November 21st, 2019 Barnstable School Committee Meeting.
Assistant Town Clerk, should we do a roll call?
Joe Nystrom, are you here, present?
I'm right here, yeah, present.
Kathy?
Here.
Stephanie Ellis?
Yes.
Barbara Dunn? And Michael Judge.
Fantastic. Well, welcome all. Then I want to welcome our Director of Finance, Mark Milne, and Gareth Markwell as well, who's going to go through the financial condition of the town. So, take it away.
Thank you and good evening, and congratulations to our new councilors and School Committee members as well as returning councilors. Good to see you all. Mark Milne, Director of Finance, and with me this evening is Gareth Markwell, our Deputy Director of Finance. And we'd like to present to you tonight the financial condition of the town. It's required, meaning as you know, as part of our charter, and it really kicks off the budget development process for the next fiscal year. And so, with that being said, I think the best place that we could start would be what I like to refer to as our financial report card. And this is our bond rating from Standard and Poor's. Every year, we enter the capital markets to fund a portion of our capital program, and similar to us on a personal basis, when you go for a loan, you're going to have your credit checked. And we have to have our credit checked by a rating agency, and we use Standard and Poor's. And every year, they have to update that report. And this is the framework that they use to calculate what our bond rating is. And you'll see the seven different factors that go into it. The largest two are economy at 30, which weighs 30% towards the score, and the financial measures, which relate another 30% of the score. And that gives them their indicative rating, which is then adjusted by positive and negative overriding factors to come up with a final rating. And once again, the town of Barnstable's latest report in February 2019 resulted in a AAA rating, which is like you are receiving a credit score of 850 on a personal level or close to that. I want to emphasize, though, in the words of a former colleague of ours, Bob Smith, said to me when we first got this, "Mark, make sure you tell them. It doesn't mean you have more money to spend, but what you have, you manage well." And so, those were words of wisdom for Bob that we take seriously today still, and he was right, dead-on. But, these are the comments from our, summarized comments from our last report. Sanders and Poor's considers us to have a very strong economy. They look at us as the regional service and transportation hub of Cape Cod, and that's not going to change. The activity within that hub may change from time to time over the years, but we will always be the hub of this region, and they consider that a very strong benefit to our credit rating. Our per capita market value is over $320,000 per resident. That's extremely strong. We have very high property values in town, and as you see in a presentation later tonight, that's going to go up even more next year during our next bond rating. They also consider us to have very strong management. And what's meant by that is not a particular, they're not grading an individual, they're not grading the finance department, they're not grading the governing body, they're really grading the town overall as, are they operating on using best practices? And we have implemented many best practices, whether it's comprehensive financial reporting, participating in a budget awards program, we have investment policies, debt policies, reserve policies, and those are the types of things that they like to see. And we practice those, and we score very well in that area. They also consider us to have very strong budget flexibility and strong budgetary performance. We have generated surpluses consistently from year to year. We don't tie a lot of our budget up in fixed costs like debt service. Once you take out a loan, you are tied to that for a number of years. We only have about 6.4% of our operating budget tied up in debt service, even though we have a lot of debt, but we are a very large budget. They consider us to have very strong liquidity, over 20% of our cash, over 20% of our budget is in the form of cash at the end of the year on our balance sheet. We also have a very strong debt and contingent liability, again, debt being a small percentage overall of our budget. However, they do recognize that we have very large pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities, and that's common across the country. We're not unique in that area. So, we don't necessarily get dinged in our credit report for that, for those large liabilities, and I'll review those later. And we work within a strong institutional framework, and what that means is that most of our revenue that we produce to fund our operations comes from the form of property taxes, which is a very stable revenue source, as opposed to income taxes, which many other communities and other states have to use to fund their budgets. So, having that strong, steady revenue stream, we score well in that category as well. Next, I'd like to cover some of our reserve budget, reserve funds. These are a ma, three major reserve accounts that we have. The first one being our free cash, which gets certified every year. During fiscal year 2019, we generated $4.7 million of surplus to add, and added it to our free cash. We used about $2.7 million of that to fund our operating and capital budgets for fiscal year '20, leaving us a balance of $14.7 million today, which we can use to assist in developing our operating and capital budgets once again for fiscal year 2020. You'll notice we don't become overly reliant on these, on this reserve to fund those budgets. We don't want to put ourselves in a position where we're funding recurring operating costs with necessarily non-recurring revenues. But we have been successful in generating at least as much surplus that we appropriate every year as to fund those budgets. Our Capital Trust Fund, you'll see that we used, we generated over 10 million, or provided, added over $10 million each year in '19 and '20 to the Capital Trust Fund. Those are contributions from the general fund and investment earnings. But we also used over 10, 10 million in fiscal year '19, and over 11 million in fiscal year '20 to fund our capital budgets. And we really use this like a debt service fund. We pay our general fund obligation bonds out of this fund every year. And we also pay for some cash projects out of this. $3 million a year for our public roads program comes out of this fund every single year. But we have close to $17 million currently that we can use, develop, going into the development of our fiscal year '21 capital plan. And then we have our sewer construction and private way fund. And the resources added to that fund in fiscal year '19 were over $3 million, and that's in the form of meals and rooms taxes, which we have dedicated with special legislation to this fund. And we used about $500,000 in fiscal year '19. To date this year, in fiscal year '20, we've generated over $1 million in meals and rooms taxes through the first quarter of the calendar year. It's going to be our biggest quarter. It's our busiest time of year, July and August, for meal and tax rooms receipts. And we used $500,000 for the operating budget in fiscal year '20, and we have almost $6.3 million of commitments out there that we've appropriated money out of this fund for the ongoing comprehensive wastewater management plan, and that's money that we've appropriated but not yet have spent. And so, we have to set that aside, leaving us about $14 million in that reserve fund. In addition to those reserves, every single one of our enterprise fund operations has a reserve fund. We have nine separate enterprise funds. And I want to emphasize, enterprise funds are, all they are is an accounting mechanism. These are operations that are primarily financed with user fees in most cases, with the exception of the Highness Youth and Community Center. These, enterprise funds can have us receive a general fund subsidy. The Highness Youth and Community Center receives a significant general fund subsidy from the, from the general, for the town. But all of these have reserve funds on their own, and these reserve funds are really in place to make sure that in the event that they have an unexpend, expenditure occurs or if a revenue deficit occurs, they have reserves to back that up. The general fund's the backstop for every single one of these enterprise funds, so we want to make sure these enterprise funds are solvent. Here's a percentage of the operating budget that is, that the reserves make up. You'll see our PEG, which is our public educational governmental TV channels, enterprise fund, along with our sewer, marinas, and San Yenek, all have very strong reserves, all close to 100% and more. The reason why the PEG has such a large reserve is because the Barnstable Fiber Optic Network that we built, we cannot get insurance on that, and it's a $2 million asset. So, we have to make sure that we have enough money in our reserves to replace any of that cable in the event that it is blown down or non-functioning. Solid Waste has a very strong reserve as well, at 67% of its operating budget. The airport is building its reserve back up. We'd like to see that at about 50% of its operating budget eventually, and I think we'll get there by the end of this fiscal year with the new lease agreement that we've signed with WS Development. And the water, HYCC and Gulf Enterprise Funds are lower than where we'd like to see them, but each one of those operations is dealing with separate issue that's unique to those operations. Water, of course, is dealing with emerging contaminants, and the capital that we've had to put, put in place to clean our waters with filters. And the Gulf operation, very competitive environment, very dependent on weather, and we've, are proposing fee increases which should help build that reserve back up. The general fund operating budget reserve, about 19.8%, is actually on the high end of the recommended range by best practices, which is about 8 to 16%. So, we are well within a good range for the general fund reserves. These are some of the other reserves that we have at the end of last fiscal year. Four separate reserves, these are all restricted for specific purposes as illustrated here, and the largest being that Community Preservation Fund, which I think Counselor Beedenbender was explaining, you know, it's restricted for this particular uses. But I just wanted to highlight those and bring those to your attention, that they exist and there is money there. School Choice and Circuit Breaker are special revenue funds that are restricted for education expenses. These are some of the largest trust funds we have at the end of last fiscal year. The Cobb Trust Fund is our largest, which again, these are all restricted for certain purposes. And the OPEB Trust Fund that we've created, the Other Post-Employment Benefits, is one of our newer trust funds, and we've contributed almost $1 million to that trust fund last year, and we continue to expand our efforts to grow that contribution every year, and we'll contribute another $1 million to that next year, this year and next year as well in our budget development process. Moving into our budget performance for last fiscal year. This is how our general fund revenue performed. You'll notice we generated almost $3.3 million of actual revenue in excess of what we estimated. It's about 2% of our budget. We try to practice conservative revenue estimating in the event that one of the, the next economic downturn comes. It gives us a little bit more budget flexibility, as I mentioned earlier, to continue to try to level fund services during time of economic stress. And so, if we stick with conservative revenue estimating, that provides us that flexibility. So, we had a positive year for revenues in fiscal year '19 in the general fund. We also returned $1.9 million of unexpended appropriations last fiscal year. That's about a little more than 1% of the operating budget, and we're, you know, $156 million general fund operating budget. It's not a, 1% isn't a terrible large amount of money, but we did, we did return some, and most of it was in the other requirements category, and that was in health insurance. We were fortunate, we had many, we were able to limit our health insurance cost increases by employees switching to high deductible plans, as well as rate increases coming in less than what we originally anticipated. You know, this is one area that's over expended, and that's snow and ice. That's the one area that the state of Massachusetts allows municipalities to overspend their operating budgets because of the unpredictable nature of that. However, we have been working to build that budget up every year by 125,000. You'll notice it's up to $850,000 now. It used to be $122,750. So, we've made a lot of progress there, and we're going to add another, we did add another 125 to that budget for fiscal year '20, and we plan to do so again in fiscal year '21. Here's how our enterprise funds performed. You'll notice six out of the nine enterprise funds used, we budgeted to use surplus to balance those operations. However, only two actually used surplus. They all had a positive or favorable budget variance. Revenues performed better in most cases than we estimated, and expenditures, unexpended appropriations were returned, which resulted in those favorable budget variances. So, every enterprise fund had a favorable variance last fiscal year. So, now I'd just like to cover some of the trends in our major revenue sources, and I'm going to go over these briefly. I, I just want to bring these to your attention. We can dig deeper, take a deeper dive into any of these. Gareth and I are available to meet with. Gareth and I are available to meet with anybody if you ever want to talk to us about any of, any of the things that we cover here tonight, but we really don't have the time to, to go into a comprehensive overview of the finances, so we're gonna give you the, the high points. This is a history, the past 10-year history of our tax levy growth. We've gone from 95 million to 128 million over the last 10 years. But notice our override capacity has also grown at the same time. We're taxing at about 33% of our tax levy capacity right now. The only way we can access that additional capacity is through voter approval at the ballots. Because of our increase in property values, that's why that capacity is growing. These are our top 10 taxpayers in town. And why is this important? It because, this is important because it shows that we don't rely, overly rely on any one in particular taxpayer. You'll notice there's a, um, only 3% of the taxes are paid by these top 10 taxpayers. If any one of these taxpayers were to become worthless, it would have a negligible impact on our tax rate, as well as tax bills for everybody else in town. You'll notice four of these, four of them are shopping centers. Mayflower being the mall, Festival is up where Petsmart and Home Goods is, Kmart Plaza, of course, which we hope to see redeveloped in the next few years. And OCW Retail is where, um, Kohl's and Whole Foods and Home Depot are. Collectively, if we saw a 25% drop in all of those shopping centers in value, again, it would have a negligible impact on our tax rate and, and the tax bills for everybody else. So that's a strength, especially when Moody's is looking at our diversity of our tax base. We have such a broad, diverse tax base in town. Our largest employer, by the way, Cape Cod Healthcare, most of their property is non-taxable. Some of it is taxable, but most of it isn't, so we don't even have to worry about that asset becoming worthless because it doesn't get taxed already. New property tax growth in town. For the pa- this is, this is about, for the past 18 years, this is what it's looked like. You can see it kind of trends where, when, where the economy goes. It peaked at 1.8 million back in 2004, and then it bottomed out two years after the recession, about three years after recession in 2012. And then it started to grow gradually again, and it's back up to $1.4 million last year, but however, it's dropped to $1.2 million this year. And we're seeing this in building permit activity. Our building permit activity's slowing down a little bit, both in value and number. And a lot of the building permit activity that we see doesn't necessarily generate new growth. A lot of it is associated with window replacements or roof replacements. It's not gonna generate new growth. New growth comes with an increase in square footage. So we do project new growth to continue to exceed a million dollars for the next couple of years based on current economic conditions and the burnt building permit activity. These are our property debt exclusions. These are, we have one debt exclusion going forward into the future. We just got these numbers today from Cape Cod Tech Regional High School. As you recall, the voters approved to exclude the debt service on the bonds that they issued for the new building construction out there, on the tack, to add that debt service cost to our tax levy. So fiscal year 21, we're expecting to see $1.9 million added to our tax levy as a result of our share of their debt service. This year, we're adding $2.3 million onto our tax levy. That's our share of that debt service. The local school bonds are all paid off in fiscal year 20. $832,000 is the last local school bond that we have to pay. That's completely covered by funding that we're receiving from the Mass School Building Authority, so there's no impact to the tax levy as a result of that. So going forward for the next 25, 24 years now, we only have Cape Cod Regional Technical High School as an approved debt exclusion that'll hit our tax levy. And this is the chart that shows how that ta- that tax, additional taxing capacity's going to be levied. It's based on enrollments at the Technical High School. And Barnstable represents about 30% of that enrollment with 177 students out of the 560-some-odd students that attend that school. And going forward, our percentage of students that are enrolled out at the school will equate to how much of the additional debt service we're gonna have to cover on our tax levy. State aid for the general fund that we receive, two main categories. We receive several smaller categories, but these are the two main ones. Chapter 78 for education and unrestricted general government aid. There really hasn't been much of a change in that unrestricted aid over the past 10 years, but Chapter 78 has increased by, by, by about $5 million over the past 10 years. This, this year, it increased over $1.6 million as a result of a change in the Chapter 70, Chapter 70 funding formula. The legislature approved yesterday, I believe, a, that new funding formula to continue to go on for the next seven years. It's sitting on the governor's desk for approval now, and we'll wait to see what happens. We'll be watching that closely. This table shows the history of the Chapter 70 program funding. You'll notice in fiscal year 20, the change in our required net school spending went up $3.1 million. However, the required local contribution only went up $1.5 million because they only increase our required local contribution by what's called the municipal revenue growth factor. And that's a number that Department of Revenue comes up with based on our local receipts that we generate. And since that was less than what the required spending under the foundation budget was, they supply aid to fill that gap. And we expect that to continue next year with the passage of this new legislation. And we anticipate the governor to, to approve this. There'll probably be some changes, some tweaks that they'll make to it. But I think we're, we're confident that we're gonna see a continuation of increased funding for Chapter 78, provided that the state follows that up appropriations in the subsequent years, and their, their financial situation allows them to do that. Another major revenue source for the general fund is motor vehicle excise tax, and you can see how this is impacted by the last economic downturn as well significantly. We went from $6.5 million to $5.1 million in 2010. And that'll happen again with the next recession, I'm sure. People stop buying new cars. This grew significantly over the past several years, topped out at $8.1 million last year, came in a little less in fiscal year 19, but we do expect it to stay around that $8 million range, at least for the next year or two. But we don't anticipate any growth in this area. Other local revenue cat- this, these three revenue categories kind, um, other local receipts, give us a sense as to how the local economy's performing. It includes permit revenue, which is our building permits, wiring permits, so forth, gas permits, beach revenue, which includes ORV stickers at Sandy Neck, parking receipts at the beaches, beach parking permits for residents, and our meals and rooms tax. And you can see in this chart that they've, they've all grown over the past several years. Little bit of a dip for beach revenue last year, little bit of a dip for permanent revenue last year, but still higher than where it's been historically, and we anticipate that to continue for the next year or two. Revenue performance for the first quarter quickly. Everybody's on track, rooms tax, meals tax, beach revenue permits, motor vehicle, we're all on target here. Some a little less, little more than, than last year at this point in time through the first quarter, but within the budget estimates that we prepared. Property tax collections through the first quarter are much better this year. Consolidating our treasurer's office with our collector's office, I think, has helped with processing collections more timely, and this chart is evidence, I believe, of that. Enterprise fund revenue for the first quarter is performing well, as well for most operations. Golf, there's a little bit of a stress in golf that we're gonna have to keep an eye on. Again, those fee increases, if approved tomorrow, will, I think, generate the revenue that golf needs. Some of the operating budget trends that we see, I'm gonna turn it over to Gareth, and he's, he's gonna cover these.
We'll give Mark a opportunity to take a breath and a sip of water. Looking at some operating budget trends for the last five years. Typically, we look at our school and municipal budgets. We see a 63% share to the school operations and a 30%, 37% share to general government operations. In fiscal year 20, we're looking at just under a $70 million operating budget for the school district, and just under $42 million for the general government. This trend is something we'll continue to see if we continue down the road of our typical 60-40 revenue sharing agreement. Unless we stray from that formula, you're going to see this trend typically carry forward in the future. Spending by major categories, salaries, expenses, and operating capital. Again, this is one that we see as a consistent spending pattern from year to year. The provide, the services we provide to the citizens of Barnstable are labor-intensive, so we're going to always have most of our expenses in FY '20, 78% in the form of salary and wages. Where we might see changes from year to year is if we were to experience large snowstorms, snow and ice expense, we might see more contracted services on the school side, things that could impact perhaps the outer district tuition, where we're actually paying for a service as opposed to providing a service through contract, through salary and wages. The fixed cost portion of our general operating budget includes things like debt service, employee benefits, state and county and regional agency and school assessments. This makes up about 36% of our general fund budget in any given year. Over this time period, from 2015 to '20, we've seen a 20% increase in this category with an average of about 3.75% year over year. Again, the largest driver of this is always going to be employee benefits or health insurance. We did experience a significant decrease in debt service in FY '20, as Mark had mentioned, as we moved and paid for the final bonds for the Barnstable High School expansion and renovation. However, that cost is now transferred over to us, the school assessment in the form of the assessment for the development of the regional high school in Harwich. Looking at some student enrollment and school spending trends. The district enrollment is hovering at around 5,100 to 5,200 students each year. Technical and charter school enrollments have been consistent. However, we are cognizant of the fact that we, we might possibly see more students attending the tech school with the lure of a new campus in, in future years. Our preliminary reports for enrollment for FY '20 indicate similar numbers to those presented tonight, with our official October 1st counts being published by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the next few weeks. In FY '19, we saw a net of 130 students leave the district under the school choice program. It is worth noting that the school choice calculation formula did change in the 2017 to 2018 period there, so you can see the jump from 54 students to 118 students. The formula was changed to include the count of those Barnstable residents that are, are participating in online virtual schools. That was a subgroup that was not included in these calculations prior to that. Looking at the, the special populations within the district, subgroups, first language not English. Just to go back to one step, people are often confused by some of the terminology here. First language not English, it's a, indicates a percentage of enrollment whose first language is a language other than English. So that's not that difficult, I guess it's straightforward. English language learners indicates the percent of enrollment whose English, who are English learners is defined as a student whose first language is a language other than Eng- other than English, but is unable to access curriculum in the school district because of that language. Special education indicates a percentage of enrollment who are on an IEP or an individualized education plan. Now, the high needs, this is calculated based on the number of high-needs students divided by the total adjusted enrollment. A student is high needs if she, he or she is designated as economically disadvantaged an ELL student or a former ELL student, or a student with disabilities. A former ELL student is a student that is not currently an ELL student, but has been at some point in the last two years. So often people are confused about what actually makes up that high needs category, so I just wanted to describe that. Lastly, we had the economically disadvantaged subgroup. This is based on this, the percentage of student population that are identified at the state level through programs like Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, SNAP, Medicaid, or other programs through the Department of Children and Families. It is worth noting that our largest growth we've, we've seen is in our English language learner population and first language not English. I believe as of this week, we're looking at a 13.4% increase over last year in English language learners within the district, and that population now represents 12.6% of our overall enrollment. Looking at in-district per pupil expenditures, we've included, obviously, Barnstable and some of our neighboring pairs, along with a couple of districts that have similar enrollment demographics, along with the state average. In fiscal year 2018, our district per pupil expenditure was $16,111, compared to the state's $15,913. We have typically mirrored the state along the way for the last five years. With the exception of minor inflationary factors, we, we don't see this trend changing particularly much, as we, we haven't deviated from our spending pattern to, to a great extent. Expenditures, when compared to our pairs, trends to be slightly lower year to year. The, the school industry standard typically has school districts with a population, a student population of between 5,000 and 6,000 students to be deemed the, kind of the ideal size for a school district. And I think when, when you look at school districts with lower populations or even higher populations, you start to lose some of the economies of scales that I think we are able to take advantage of. Hence, the, the slightly lower per pupil cost compared to our smaller neighboring towns.
So looking ahead. We think we'll be able to continue generating at least a million dollars of new property tax growth for the next couple of years. We do feel, again, the motor vehicle excise tax receipts will level off. There is a little, some stress in the automobile industry right now due to regulatory changes, interest rates, tariffs, you know, union negotiations. And so I, I think people who have bought new cars have bought them, and I think we're gonna see a little bit of a slowdown in that industry. State aid is projected to grow, as I talked about earlier. Rooms tax revenue, we think, will grow, especially, we know it will grow due to the tax being applied to short-term rentals now. So we are expecting to see that come in this year. We only, we haven't gotten a payment for a full quarter yet. We only have one month so far for the month of July that we just received in September. We're working with the Department of Revenue to give us the breakout as to how much of that rooms tax was associated with short-term rentals versus traditional lodging like hotels and motels. They've been unable to give us that information to date, but they have promised it to us, and they're working diligently to get it to every community on the Cape. We are all hounding them for that. Permit, beach, and meals tax revenue, we think, will continue to perform well, as it has been, based on the current economy. If unemployment stays low, inflation stays low, we continue to expect to see visitors down here spending their money. We think interest rates will hold steady, both on our cash deposits as well as our borrowing rates. We don't see any significant changes impacting our budgets going forward in either one of those areas. Employee benefit costs, we expect to continue to rise faster than all other areas of the operating budget. Pension assessment went up 10% this year. That was mainly due to the county's pension assets performing. That was mainly due to the county's pension assets performing less, they earned less than two percent on their assets in fiscal and calendar year 2018, but 2019 was a very good year, and we expect it to be a very much better year, so we could see a much smaller assessment increase for fiscal year '20. Health insurance will probably rise faster to inflation, it traditionally has. We were fortunate in fiscal year '20 to have no increase in our health insurance rates. Preliminary talks with the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group indicate that it will probably be another low increase for fiscal year '21, which is good news, but going beyond that, it's usually averaged around six to seven percent a year. Utility and fuel budgets, I think we think will, I skipped over one here, growth in English language learners, economically disadvantaged and high need student populations, we expect those to continue to grow. We have seen those grow in the school department for the past several years, and we expect that to continue, and the costs associated with that will have to be provided for in the operating budget. Utility and fuel budgets will trend with inflation. Inflation is low right now, we have not seen large increases in our utility costs or our fuel costs. We know one thing, coastal resilience, it's going to become a much larger factor in our operating and capital budgets. Storms are intensifying, the impacts to our coastal areas are intensifying, and we're going to have to start taking this into consideration and developing our operating and capital budgets. It also affects our property and casualty insurance rates. Remember when Katrina happened several years ago? What happened to our insurance market here on Cape Cod? You couldn't get homeowners insurance, and many of us ended up in the Massachusetts Fair Plan, and the rates quadrupled. And if we continue to have storms like this and fires and natural disasters across the country, it's going to affect the insurance industry, and that'll be spread across all of our bills, not just us in the town, but us personally and our homeowners, cost of our homeowners as well. Fund balance, well, we expect to continue to decline as we try to aggressively address our capital program as well. Here's our unfunded liabilities currently. Our county retirement system has a seven hundred and twenty-two million dollar unfunded liability. Barnstable's share of that is about a hundred and three million dollars. There is a required amortization of that unfunded liability that the county has to address. Every pension system in Massachusetts has a requirement to pay off that unfunded liability. Barnstable County's is scheduled to be paid off or fully funded by 2035. They're currently about sixty percent funded with an estimate of using, I think, a seven and three-quarter, seven and a half percent return on investments, they're expected to have this fully funded by 2035. Other post-employment benefits are a hundred and sixty-eight million. This is essentially health insurance that we provide our retirees, down from a hundred and ninety-two million the previous year, and that's a result of additional assets that we've dedicated for this, but mainly a result of changing in the assumptions that the actuary used to calculate it that worked in our favor. And teacher pensions are at a hundred and thirty-six million dollars. The good news here is that's a state's obligation, it's not the town's obligation. All across the Commonwealth, the Commonwealth is responsible for all teacher pensions. Our capital program, submissions for fiscal year '20 to '24, about two hundred and seventy-eight million. We just finished receiving our submissions for the next five years, and we're tallying those up. Current estimates for the comprehensive wastewater management plan we've presented to you about a month ago at about a billion dollars. We've successfully funded about a hundred and fifty million dollars in capital improvements over the last five years, it's a pretty substantial capital program. We project that we can do about another hundred and forty-four million over the next ten years with the existing resources that we have in the Capital Trust Fund. We can enhance that if we continue to dedicate more funds to that program. We can do about a hundred million with the sewer construction fund over the next ten years. Again, that's with existing resources. If we find, that doesn't include any subsidies we might receive from the state revolving trust fund or the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, that's just existing resources, so that should get better than that. And the enterprise funds will really largely depend upon rate increases that we implement there. Depending upon how aggressive we need to get with their capital programs, will have to be paid for through rate increases. And finally, this, I think the school committee saw this last night, I'd like to present it again to you guys tonight, you know, we've had this 60-40 revenue sharing agreement for a number of years, but we think this illustration provides a clearer understanding of what's involved. With all the green boxes representing the various general fund revenue sources that we use to balance the operating budget, we estimate that to grow next year by eight million dollars. Then we have to fund our fixed costs, which are represented in the orange boxes, assessments, employee benefits, other fixed costs like debt service and property and casualty insurance, transfers to the enterprise fund, the capital fund support, the HYCC enterprise fund, and the Capital Trust Fund support. And after we deduct the growth in those four fixed cost areas, that leaves us about four point two million dollars that's subject to that 60-40 revenue sharing agreement, with sixty percent or two and a half million dollars increased to the school budget and one point seven million dollar increase to the general government budget. And then there are off-budget accounts that supplement both those budgets in the form of grants, revolving funds, and circuit breaker funds, and community preservation fund for the general government operations and so forth. And so we wanted to provide you an illustration as to, makes it a little bit more clear, we think, of how that, the general fund budget works. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark and Gareth. Great presentation. Open it up for questions up here. Counselor Bogan?
One question, thank you, Mark. You reference in here the one billion dollars associated with the comprehensive wastewater management plan. Do you anticipate that that's going to have any effect on the bond rating or no, because those costs are largely going to be borne by the affected residents?
I don't believe it'll initially have an impact on the bond rating. It depends on many other factors than just that cost, but if we are successful in finding additional resources to fund it and implementing sewer assessments, for example, or a general fund contribution, if we can find a way to fund it without significantly impacting other areas of the operating budget, I think they'll look upon that as favorable.
Any other counselors or committee member, Ellis or whoever?
Two quick questions. I noticed on the major reserve accounts in the beginning, actually, our newest counselor over here noticed it, balance as of July 1st, is that supposed to be 2019?
No, it's actually 18.
It is 18, okay. And then also the number on the free cash, is that before or after the 60-40 split, the twelve point six million for the free cash amount?
That's before the 60-40 split.
Okay. And then question in regards to the debt levy with the Cape Cod Regional Tech High School, the two point three million dollars that Barnstable is responsible for, is that a per capita calculation for that amount? Will that fluctuate with student enrollment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Rapra Citi?
Thank you very much and for both of your presentations. I have a question about on page thirty-four on school enrollment, on net choice, school choice send-receive, I see you have receive in parentheses, and in 2014, it looked like maybe we received five students. Did we receive any students in 2019, or it looks like we sent out a hundred and thirty?
Yeah, so we sent out a hundred and thirty students more than we received in fiscal year '19.
Do you know how many we?
Yeah, so school choice enrollment in fiscal year '19, we sent out two hundred and twenty-two point six FTE or equivalent students, and we had coming into the district ninety-one point nine FTEs.
Okay, thank you. And, you know, much has been said about the new one point five billion dollar infusion that's supposed to be signed by the governor, and what's encouraging is that this is going to be tied to all the needs of this district, to the English language learners, the income, so not necessarily to the zip code, but to the students, and I hope that the governor signs this and that this school district will benefit greatly from that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Bean Bender?
Thank you, just a quick question, and thank you both for that, very informative Just a very quick question, page thirty-five on the graphs, you had high needs and economically disadvantaged, and in the high needs, you said that was comprised of economically disadvantaged ELL, former ELL, so just curious, what's the difference between the economically disadvantaged and the high needs versus the economically disadvantaged?
The high needs is a calculation of the four major groups, English language learners, first language not English, special education, and the economically disadvantaged.
So it includes, so there's a little bit of redundancy in that part of the chart?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to confirm, thanks.
Anyone else? Counselor Snapp?
Thank you for the presentation, just kind of a quick question on the net growth dollars, the redevelopment on 132, which is producing Cape Cod Five, did that end up with any new net growth, or was that sort of a wash?
Yes, that actually resulted in quite a bit of new net growth, and we only captured about half of it this year, we're going to get the other half next year because it's not completely finished.
Counselor Dagwan?
Yes, I just wanted to ask about the revenue for the circuit breaker program. How much are we spending in that area?
So the circuit breaker is essentially a state reimbursement for extraordinary special ed costs that the district incurs. We currently, well, we closed the fiscal year '19 with a balance of just over one point seven million dollars. We've banked that for fiscal year '19, we'll look to utilize that same amount during FY ' '20 to supplement our general operating budget. We'll bank what we received during fiscal year '20 and use that for basis for budget development in FY '21. Predictions for fiscal year '21, we're estimating about one point six million dollars in reimbursement. Again, that's always going to be subject to the state legislature and the appropriation process. Essentially, we've got to spend it to get it back, and it's always going to be behind it, yeah.
Mark, there's a lot of numbers in here, but there's one really important number that I think we should underscore, and that's new growth dollars. And what amount do we need each year, in your opinion, to maintain town services?
And so we've looked at this, and we've evaluated the budget over the past few years and determined that we need about a million dollars in new growth dollars just to sustain the current level of services. Anything we get above that can then go to address any additional service impacts that might result of that new growth. The best new growth we can have is new growth that redevelops existing blighted parcels where infrastructure exists. Bad new growth is where growth occurs where there's no infrastructure and requires us to provide additional services or spend money on infrastructure to support it. And so fortunately, we've seen some good growth recently in areas where it's been redevelopment. And the next one in the pipeline that we're very encouraged about is Cape Town Plaza or the landing where Kmart is, and that should generate some really good new growth for us because it's going to be additional building, square footage, and it's an area where there's existing infrastructure to support it.
Great, there's a couple of people behind you very excited about Cape Town Plaza, too. They'll be up a little bit later tonight, but that's just a number I want especially the counselors to really keep in mind, that's a million dollars in new growth just to maintain. It's not an extra million bucks, it's a million dollars just to maintain. So it really drives the decisions we make on infrastructure zoning, really kind of streamlining the path to development, incentivizing the development of blighted property, but that's a million dollars just to maintain. And that's in a, we're in a good economy right now, we're getting just over that, so I think when we were down in the recession, we were probably generating maybe about a half million dollars in new growth, so that's our decisions there. So that's just a number I want everyone to keep in mind. Anyone else before we go? Counselor Dagwan?
Yes, just one last question. I looked at your statistics on grants for the school, and it seemed to be consistent from 2015 to up to this point, and I was wondering what kinds of grants have been, you know, sustaining us? If you could just mention a couple we see year after year.
Yes, so I would have to give credit to the school department, and especially their grant management, in that the school department has been very active in seeking and obtaining grants for various initiatives throughout the district. You look at the environmental lab that is under construction, we saw over two hundred thousand for that. But again, every year, our biggest grants are going to be our IDEA special ed grants, which funds in the district, the majority of our educational support personnel, our Title I grants, providing extra services in the schools in the district that kind of really need and benefit from that. Seeing small declines in those grants year over year, however, we're able to work through that.
All right, anyone else have any questions? Gentlemen, I thank you for a great presentation. Before we close out, I just want to recognize our superintendent, Migmayo Brown, is here, and our assistant superintendent, Kristin Harmon, thank you for being here tonight, good to see you. Mr. Chairman, would you like to adjourn your meeting?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn the Barnstable School Department's, the Barnstable School Committee's November 21st, 2019 joint meeting. Thank you.
All right, you want to do a second just to vote, make it official?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much for being here, great to see you. We'll take a two-minute recess to reassemble up here on the dais. We'll take our two-minute recess to reassemble up here on the dais. We can continue with the orders of the day? Yep, just need one more councillor so we have quorum, so we can continue. All right. I have my quorum. All right, so we're going to move on to the orders of the day. We're going to start with old business. Councillor Snep, could you please read item twenty-twenty dash zero four five, please?
This matter is old business, requiring a public hearing and a roll call vote of two-thirds. Item twenty-twenty dash zero forty-five, appropriation and loan order of five hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars pursuant to temporary repair to private roads program regarding Wheeler Road in Barnstable.
Councillor Levesque?
Thank you, Councillor. I need to withdraw my sponsorship of the, of this item, and I also need to recuse myself from this item due to the fact that I live on this street.
Thank you, and the assistant town clerk will note that. Councillor Snep?
I would off.
The assistant town clerk will record that Councillor Snep is now sponsoring item twenty-twenty dash zero four five. All right, we have our Director of Public Works, Dan Santos, for the rationale.
Thank you. Chapter one seventy-one of the Acts of nineteen ninety-four, as amended by chapter three fifty of the Acts of twenty-fourteen, authorized the town to borrow funds to repair and improve private roads within the town. Under this program, the abutters to roads being repaired can be charged betterment assessments for one hundred percent of the actual cost of repairs, which they can elect to pay in one lump sum or over a period of up to twenty years. This road will not be taken by the town of Barnstable and will remain a private road. A majority of the property owner, abutters to Wheeler Road in the village of Marson's Mills, Barnstable, have expressed an interest in having repairs made to their private road, and sixty-seven percent of the abutters have signed a consent and acknowledgement agreement for betterment assessment. The proposed work includes drainage system installations and pavement reclamation. The cost of the improvements is estimated at five hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred dollars, distributed as forty-two full shares not to exceed twelve thousand, two hundred seventy dollars per full share abutter. There is no cost to the town, as all costs will be recovered by betterment assessed to the abutters. The town will use a bond to cover the cost of the repairs and use the revenue collected from the betterment assessment to make the annual loan payments on the bond. Thank you.
Thank you for that. This is a public hearing, so if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, now would be the time to come forward. Now's the time, if you'd like to make a public comment. Just please state your name when you come up.
My name's Wendy Beerworth, I'm the Secretary of Wheeler Road Association, and I'm a member of the Road Repaving Committee. Our numbers were twenty-nine out of forty-two members, which we calculated sixty-nine percent. We have had a large number of meetings, we've kept all of our residents very, very fully informed. We had two people who resisted it, one because they don't like the town program and don't like the five percent interest rate, they think it should be lower. And we, and we had one person who didn't want the road repaved, even though it hasn't been repaved for twenty-three years, it's badly spitered and badly in need of it. Everyone else has been enthusiastically in support, and we have timed, tried to time the repaving, so it'll happen next summer when the town's not repaving, so that we'll, there's less business and hopefully we'll get lower bids. And so we hope that you'll go ahead and approve it this evening. And there are five of us here, if you had any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak to this item? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Have a second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the public hearing is closed, council discussion on this item? Motion to move the question, do I have a second? All those in favor moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, I'm going to turn this over to the assistant town clerk for a roll call vote.
Breen Bender?
Yes.
Bogan? Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
All right, that passes, thank you. Councillor Hebert, could you open the public hearing and read item twenty-twenty dash zero four six, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is item number twenty-twenty dash zero four six, supplemental appropriation request in the amount of one hundred thousand, two hundred dollars for the Barnstable Police Department fiscal year twenty-twenty operating budget for the purpose of funding the hiring of five current patrol officer vacancies. This is a public hearing, roll call vote.
I have a second, I just want to note, Councillor Levesque is back on the dais. Councillor Rap Grissette?
Yes, Councillor Stein Hilber, I'd like to make a motion to amend twenty-twenty zero four six, moving to amend the item by striking the sum of a hundred thousand, two hundred dollars and substituting in place thereof the sum of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, please.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, and this will be explained by the chief. So we need to vote on that motion to amend item twenty-twenty dash zero four six, striking the sum of a hundred thousand, two hundred and substituting sixty-six thousand, eight hundred. All those in favor? Say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the item is amended. I'll turn it over to the chief for the rationale, good to see you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Welcome new members. My name is Matthew Sonneman, I'm the Chief of Police, and I am here to speak to item number twenty-twenty dash zero four six. The department is seeking to fill some of our current patrol officer vacancies and send four new recruits to the February twenty-twenty Cape Cod Municipal Police Academy. In order to do so, the department requests a supplemental appropriation in the amount of sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars to pay the costs associated with medical exams, psychological assessments, academy tuition, and equipment needs of each recruit, each recruit. At the time of the preparation and finally, finalization of the FY twenty budget, the exact number of vacancies in academy availability was not known, so it was not factored into the budget process at that time. However, that's how it has become clear now. The fiscal impact of this would be that the funds would be provided from the general fund reserves and that this appropriation will not be added to the department's FY twenty-one base operating budget.
Thank you for that. This is a public hearing, so if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Have a second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, public hearing is closed, council discussion on this item? Councillor Snep?
Thank you, Chief. Just a quick question on the handheld radios, is that something that generally has a shelf life that you wouldn't have the ability to pass it on from whoever's leaving the department to the, the new people?
Generally, they do have a shelf life. As time goes by, the technology improves, so you get new, the newer radios. And as officers do retire, or if they stay within the act of service, especially now that we do, the retirees do work details, they do retain some of those radios, and the older radios do get recycled to other purposes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a second to move the question, all those in favor moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, I will again turn this over to the assistant town clerk for a roll call vote.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullen?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Leveck?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein Hilber?
Yes.
Breen Bender?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That passes, good to see you, Chief. You, too. Councillor Levesque, could you please read item twenty-twenty dash zero four eight and open the public hearing, please?
Yes, thank you, this is old business, public hearing, roll call, majority vote. This is item number twenty-twenty dash zero four eight, appropriation and transfer order in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars for the rehabilitation and restoration work to the Unitarian Church of Barnstable located at three thousand, three hundred and thirty Main Streets, Route six A, Barnstable, Massachusetts, as written.
I have a second, and we have Lindsey Council here, the chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. Good to see you, Lindsey.
Thank you, Councillor Stein Hilber, welcome to new members, and actually, welcome to all members, great to see you all tonight. Lindsey Council, chairman of the Community Preservation Committee, as mentioned. We're here to look at the request of the Unitarian Church of Barnstable Village. We're at the February twenty-fifth meeting of the Community Preservation Committee. The eight members present voted unanimously to recommend to the town council, through the town manager, the Unitarian Church of Barnstable's request for one hundred and thirty-eight, for up to one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars in historic preservation funds to restore or replace thirty-three windows, repair and renovate the church entrance, including a front door with hardware, repair the granite wall and stairwell, replace the cupola on Warren Hall with a replica, install a dehumidifier and vapor barrier in the basement crawl space, and new siding for Warren Hall. This funding represents a portion of the total project cost of one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, with twenty-five percent, or thirty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars contributed by the congregation. The Unitarian Church of Barnstable is an historic building listed as a contributing builder, building in a national registered district, and is recognized by the Massachusetts Historical Commission as a historically and architecturally significant. The church is used by a wide range of community groups from the general public, including meeting space for Alcoholics Anonymous, Al-Anon, lecture groups, and the use of the kitchen for meal preparation for the homeless at Saint Joseph's Homeless Center. And with me tonight is Crystal Gips from the group to do a presentation, when you're ready.
Thank you. Welcome.
As Lindsey said, my name is Crystal Gips, and I've been the chair of the task force at the church that has put together this proposal. And I would say, for those of you who might not know which building we're talking about, the Unitarian Church of Barnstable is the gray building at the top of the hill in Barnstable, above the, Barnstable Village, above the only traffic light in town. So I think you can figure out which, which building we are, is our home. And I might just say that, that that site has been the site of the church and of our congregation from the very early days of the village. The present sanctuary was built in nineteen oh six, so it's a hundred and thirteen years old. It, it replaced a building that burned in the previous year, and there was another building before that that had been outgrown, and then a very small facility previous to that. So it's a, it is a very historical location, and the building is historical. And the entire building, sanctuary, built in nineteen oh six, then the social hall, Warren Hall, which also includes the kitchen, built in nineteen sixty, and then more recently after that, an additional space added on to the end of Warren Hall, which accommodates the office. And all of that has been declared a historical site, so, so the historical designation pertains to the entire site. So the, the purpose of our project is to preserve the historic integrity of the church and, and the village as well, because this is a very important building in the village, it's very prominent. And we want to ensure the sustainability of the physical structure. All of the changes, the renovations, the restorations that we're talking about pertain to the structure of the building. And as Lindsey mentioned, this is a building that's used by the larger community in many ways, and so we're interested in making sure that that facility is safe and attractive, not only for the congregation, but for the community. So this is a summary of our, of our budget, and we had spent twenty-four thousand, almost twenty-five thousand, previous to this, making this proposal, and, and we will be contributing more to it. So our, our request is for one hundred and thirty-four, two eighty-one, as you, as you know. The project components are as follows, and I'm going to give you a little bit more information on each of these. So I'll, I'll jump to the cupola first. We want to replicate the existing cupola base, so it'll be taken down and, and the, and a new one exactly like the one there will be replaced. And you can see that there why it needs to be replaced. It's, it's quite worn, the wood is very thin, and there's even a big patch on the, well, actually, two patches there on the front of it. We intend to, the, the top of it is a copper dome, and we intend to save that and put it back on a new base. Then we need a variety of, of improvements to the masonry at the front entrance. By the front entrance, I mean the entrance, which is our primary door between the sanctuary and Warren Hall. It's the way that almost everyone goes in and out all the time. So we need new paving bricks and the underlayment base for the bricks. We need a new granite edging and retaining wall, you'll see in a minute that I'll show you the, the current railroad ties there that are in terrible condition. There's some foundation wall surface that needs to be repaired, and we need to resurface and repaint the railings. So there you can, this is not a great photo, but you can see that the railroad ties are really crumbling there. And there's another picture where the railroad ties, which are part of a retaining wall, and then some bricks that are not, really not even attached to anything, all would be replaced by standing pieces of granite. You also can see the bricks there, and, and you can tell why we need to replace them. They're really quite dangerous because of the space between them. So we'll be putting, building the new underlayment and putting a total new surface on. And this is a shot of a piece of the foundation wall where some of the foundation granite is crumbling and, and the rebar is exposed, and all of that needs to be repaired. Then along with that, with that masonry work, we have a number of aspects of millwork that need to be done. The facing of the wall around the front entrance is plywood, and the plywood is stripping, and the paint clearly has, has stripped off, and you can, so you can see that that's worn, and the woodwork beside it is worn. We're going to replace that plywood with shiplap, and then all of the woodwork, the framing woodwork will be, also be replaced, and it'll be exactly the size and shape of, and color as, that we have there now. There's a picture of the front door, you can see that it's rusted at the bottom, the door frame is not in good shape, and that piece of metal there is, is keeping us safe from some deteriorating support and, and wooden ties that are underneath it. We also are going to replace these white panels, there are two of them on the, the street side of Warren Hall. We want to replace them with gray clapboards that look exactly like the ones to the outside. We will maintain the framing around that space so that the, the shape of the woodwork will still be there, but we're going to get rid of that plywood. And then the window replacement is a huge part of the project. All of the windows in Warren Hall and in the connector between the sanctuary and Warren Hall will be replaced. They are, you can see here on the outside, this is a sample of why they need to be replaced. We, we will be doing all new framing. The windows are wooden with a, with a vinyl covering on the outside, and all of the woodwork will be of the same format and the same, same white color. This is a shot from the inside, and it's a little bit difficult to see, but the reason that we're replacing all of these windows is that this, the aluminum slides in the side don't work, and it's very difficult to open and close the windows. And we brought in window, a window expert who tried very hard to find replacement parts and couldn't, so we, we simply need to have new windows. And this is, what you see here is a picture of our handmade weather protectors, which we put in, inside in the windows at this time of year. It's vinyl over, over a wood frame because so much air comes through the windows. And then in the sanctuary, we have six big windows that will be restored. They're really gorgeous windows with the original glass, including some with the twisty sections in the, in the glass. But they need new weights and chains, they need to be painted, and they need to be repointed, and we need weather stripping as well. So we, as So we, as an experiment, Cape Associates, which is the contractor that we will be using, did the work on two of those windows, and so we know now exactly what we need to do. You can see in this picture, that's an example of why we need to replace the weights and chains. There's a broken rope there, and so that makes that window inoperable. And that's an example of all the painting that we need. So all of these windows will be weather stripped as well. And there are storm windows on the outside, they'll be taken off. The frames on the outside painted, all of the windows repointed on the outside. The storm windows put back on. And this shows you what sad shape the pointing is on the windows on the outside. Upstairs in the attic, we have windows in really bad shape. This is a sample of broken glass, and so little pointing left in there that the windows are really dangerous. And that's looking back out over the cemetery. In the, we have an external entrance to the basement. That's the basement under the sanctuary, and there's much work to be done there. It has a beautiful granite wall, and the steps are granite, but the wall is beginning to break down in some places, so we need to replace that, to repair that. We are also going to put in drainage at the foot of the stairs and in front of the door into the basement. And so I just scraped away some leaves there so that you could see that there's a granite pad down there, which also has some damage in it. That will be taken out and drainage put in so that the cellar doesn't get as much water inflow as it does now. This is a picture of the fence around the stairwell. Obviously, it needs to be replaced. It's a very dangerous situation, and so we will be replacing that with a higher picket fence and a gate. And this is a picture of our so-called door into the basement, which will be replaced with a proper door. And then, the basement in the sanctuary has two parts to it. There's a small section that's actually a room, and then, under the main part of the sanctuary is a crawl space. And this is the entrance to the crawl space. It has no vapor barrier at this time, so we will be installing one and putting in a dehumidifier so that we can keep the building structure drier than it is now. And the stairs, the internal stairs down into the basement need some repair work. There's a couple of broken steps there, and some of the railing supports are broken. So we would be repairing that as well. So that's the end of the picture show. If I can answer questions for you, I would be glad to.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so this would be the time, if any members of the public wish to speak, to please come forward. Just please state your name.
My name's Stephen Thomas from Ossaville, and I'm one of the four people on the committee that have been working on this for four years now. Two years with the architect, and then, another year or so hashing over some bids, and, because the bids came in high, more than we wanted to spend. And so we whittled down our scope of the work down to what we have now as a budget. And then, we've taken about the last six months to eight months to go through the process with the Old Kings Highway and the CPC and get on your agenda. But I just want you to know that the four members have worked diligently in trying to keep the cost down and to maintain this building. To give you an example, just this past weekend, including this weekend, we raised $9,500 for nonprofit organizations that occupied Warren Hall for last Saturday and Sunday and part of this coming weekend. So it's just a little piece of what we do. But all the restorations have nothing to do with the religious piece. It's strictly the historic piece of the structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Have a second, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, council discussion, are there questions on this item? Councilor Beedenbender?
Not a question, just a comment. I serve as liaison to the committee and saw this, have been watching this project for quite a few months now, trying to get to this point. And I just want to say, this is a worthwhile project. You jumped through all the hoops, you came to the committee. The committee asked you for a couple of additional pieces as we were going through the process. And, you know, your group came through and answered all the questions and crossed all the Ts, dotted the Is. And your efforts to help defray some of the costs by your own fundraising is commendable, and we appreciate that effort. And so I will be voting for this, of course. I think it's a great project. And I was at your alternative fair manning one of the tables last weekend, and it was great. And you're incredibly inclusive, and you do a wonderful service to many folks in the community, so thank you very much.
Councilor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. It seems that you've been at this for a long time. So the vote by community preservation was back in February, so I'm gathering that then you went to Old Kings Highway? Is that what the delay is in coming before the council?
We went to Old Kings Highway, but we also were delayed for a while because of the window experiment and then a review of that work. And then, I believe that our proposal came to the council several months ago, and you've been busy, I guess.
Yeah. So I hope in the future we can move things along a little bit more expeditiously. I hope you got a lump sum fixed price on all these repairs, because it seems like quite a list, a formidable list, and I hope you hold whoever is doing the work to the numbers that they presented to use.
Best to do that.
Yeah. So, good luck with the project, and thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Starr?
Thank you, Crystal. That was a great presentation. The church itself is a historical asset to the village. I live in the village, I've been to many, many events there. It's a great congregation, and I'd like to see the building preserved. So, thank you for your work.
Anyone else? Councilor Neary?
Thank you again for the presentation. Just to follow up, with fellow Councilor Rap Grissette, remodels can be arduous.
We've already been through arduous.
My fear is that once you start peeling away layers, you may have underlying concerns. And again, to kind of follow up, so the contractor in question, is this an all-in, no-change-order type of a proposal? That would be my.
Yeah. We have certainly reviewed it with them a number of times, and they have, they've made a commitment that this is what they think they need to spend. I would also say that we've got some money, so that if we get in the middle of finding a hole someplace that we have to deal with, I think we can address it.
For those who don't know, Councilor Neary's been remodeling his house for at least two or three years now. And he probably has sheet rock to do as soon as he gets home, so, good luck, Paul. Councilor Knapp?
Thank you for your presentation. I, too, have benefited from many community events in your congregation, so I appreciate your concerns for maintaining it. I did have a question, it might be directed at Lindsey. Is this the first time that the congregation has come before CPC for funding?
No. There was another project, I'm going to say now, just about 10 years ago. It was a very small one. I think the amount of money was maybe $17,000. You know, $17,000.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you for the presentation. Do I have a second to move the question? All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right. And this is another roll call vote, so I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant Town Clerk.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Chauncey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Great. Councilor Cullum, could you please read item 2020-049, please?
Yes. Let's see. Item number 2020-049, Amendments to the Administrative Code, Chapter 241, Article 4, Municipal Organization Changing the Senior Services Division of the Community Services Department to the Council on Aging Division. This may be acted upon with a majority vote.
Great, thank you. We have Lynn Poyant, our Director of Community Services. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Councilors Steinheilber, councilors, and welcome to our new councilors. In an effort to better reflect the changing landscape of aging services and to ensure that we are using inclusive and welcoming language to refer to older adults, the Barnstable Senior Center changed its name last June to the Barnstable Adult Community Center. As part of this transition, it is proposed that the Senior Services Division be renamed as the Council on Aging Division. This amendment will help to ease some of the confusion by bringing the division in line with the standard term that is used to refer to municipal aging service departments across the state, as outlined in Mass. General Laws. The Executive Office of Elder Affairs defines councils on aging as municipal agencies that provide local outreach, social and health services, advocacy, information, and referral for older adults, their families, and caregivers.
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, do I have a motion to move the question? I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, so this is item 2020-049. All those in favor of this item, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, it's going to be a roll call.
Oh, it didn't say roll call on here. Okay. I'll turn it over to you for a roll call.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Snapp?
Yes.
Chauncey?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Steinheilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And Lynn, I'm going to take, you have one more item, so I'm just going to take that now, so. Councilor Neary, could you please read item 2020-065 under New Business?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd first like to just comment and say that I am happy and proud to say that my daughter and my grandchildren are Coles, members of this family. This is New Business, it may be acted upon. It's item number 2020-065. It's the acceptance of a gift in the amount of $20,000 from the Glenna Cole Fund for Hope Incorporated for Barnstable Recreation Division's aquatic program, as written.
Thank you very much. Lynn, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to read, I'm just going to speak. One of the things that happened yesterday was I found out that yesterday was the 11th anniversary of Glenna's passing. Glenna was a lifeguard in the Barnstable Recreation Program for a number of years. Her favorite beach was Douse's Beach, where she served. And unfortunately, she became a victim of melanoma, which took her life at the age of 26. Her family decided that there needed to be something good that happened from such a tragedy that took place for their family. So they established the Glenna Cole Fund for Hope, and what they did is it was to raise awareness of melanoma and skin care prevention, or sun care prevention. So through the years, they provided the town with sunscreen at all of our beaches for our patrons and our lifeguards. For our lifeguards in particular, they created shade canopies that get affixed to the lifeguard stands so that when they're out for a full day, they're protected. And then, at two beaches, they created shade canopies. One is at Douse's Beach, and the other is at Craigville Beach. And they have been very popular. I mean, the instant that they got it put up, they were already in use. And actually, when Douse's Beach had whatever microburst happened during the tornado this past year, and it was out of order, people were missing it very much. After 10 years of running the Glenna Cole Fund for Hope, the family and Glenna's friends who had created the board decided that it was time for the fund to go away. And so, they were trying to think of what they could do with the fund and where it would benefit most. And so, the Cole family generously is providing the town of Barnstable's aquatic program with the $20,000 proceeds from the fund.
That's great, thank you. Any councilor questions on this item? Do I have a motion to move the question? I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, and this is a simple majority vote. This is item 2020-065. All those in favor of this item, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much. And I would like to make sure that I recognize that Patty Machado was extremely instrumental in helping the Coles when they were doing the piggy trot and any other event that they had. And actually, the entire aquatic program family was very instrumental in helping with a number of their activities. So thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you. All right, for our next two items, we're going back to Old Business. I'd like to invite up our airport team. Good to see you tonight. Councilor Beedenbender, could you please read item 2020-052 and open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you. This is Old Business, Public Hearing, Roll Call, Majority Vote. This is item number 2020-052. This is a supplemental appropriation and transfer order in the amount of $150,000 for the fiscal year 2020 Airport Capital Budget for the purpose of funding airport capital improvement projects for mitigation of per and polyfluori alkal substances PFOS and 1-4-dioxane, as written.
I have a second. And rationale, Katie, our airport manager, Katie Service?
Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight with me, I have Matt Ilya, who is the Assistant Airport Manager, and Brian Masa, who is our LSP, an environmental scientist with Horsley Witten Group.
Welcome all.
I wanted to take a moment just to welcome the new councilors here. Please feel free to reach out to Matt and I to come see our facility, take a tour. Some of the councilors that are with us tonight have taken that opportunity, so please reach out to us to go ahead and do that. And just a note, since we've been talking about things happening in December, on December 17th, from 2:00 to 3:00, we'll be having a holiday celebration in the airport terminal with our tenants. Please feel free to drop by and get to know some of the tenants that work at the airport. For this item, I just wanted to go over a little bit of background about what the airport has been doing in dealing with PFOS and to give some of the councilors who might not have been privy to some of this information in the past, just that background. This same rationale is going to be used for the next item as well, so I'll just do it once. Burning fuel from aircraft accidents, it really relies on more than just water to put out the fuel. The FAA requires that airports carry chemical agents that are effective in smothering that fuel, smothering the spark. And the chemicals that we use has been aqueous film-forming foam, known as A triple F, and that's what I'll call it for the rest of the evening. Unfortunately, these same chemicals that make it effective to fight our fires can also lead to adverse health risks, and contamination to drinking water has been noted. The Environmental Protection Agency has identified PFOS substances being used in our industry since the 1940s. We've all been exposed to some sort of PFOS chemical. It's an array of consumer products and industrial products. They found that the substances, because of the health effects that they do have, they started looking into the exposure at different levels and identifying those commercial activities that have some type of chemical compound that have PFOS in a chemical compound that they've been using. So what are the sources of PFOS? It's really in everything, everyday products. It's in carpets, it's in cosmetics, outdoor gear, clothing, protective coating on our jackets that we use. It's also in cleaning products, furniture, shampoo. Uh, it's also in cleaning products, furniture, shampoo, um, additives and sealants, car wax, it's, you name it, it's everywhere. It also happens to be in firefighting foams. When a study was done, um, at different locations, this one happens to be in Vermont, they took a look at 66 samples that they took throughout the state of Vermont, and these samples were taken in areas that were not known to have any type of release, and they found PFOS, um, in every single sample that they tested. So it is, uh, located in, uh, many things that we do. The federal and state, um, action plan, the EPA, um, has identified approaches to identifying and understanding PFOS. They are addressing the current contamination and they're trying to find ways to prevent, um, future contamination. With the EPA's, um, decision to move forward on that, the local state Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection was tasked with identifying PFOS in industrial and consumer applications, so that they could try to understand, um, really where the bleed was and where we could try to put in some type of preventative measures, um, in the way that we do business. So one of the things that they did was reach out to a number of airports in Massachusetts and identified airports that currently use historic A-triple-F, um, which does contain the PFOS, and to try to curb how we're doing our business, even though we have an important task and a role, uh, which is to respond to emergencies. The use of firefighting foam at the airport, um, like I said, it's used for emergency response, responses. I'm gonna go through a little bit of history of how we've used it in the past. It is something that's required by the FAA, and the FAA, um, also requires that we test annually, in that we have an MCI drill, or Multi-Casualty Incident Drill, every three years. And so, in the past, we had always just sprayed the foam, we sprayed the chemical that we have used just to practice in our training. We no longer do that. Since 2015, we stopped that practice because of the known health risks. Typically, right now, the FAA, although they're looking at other alternatives for A-triple-F, they have not found one yet. So they are working on it, the FAA in New Jersey, they're working at their, um, at their main facility to try to find an alternative. However, we have to continue carrying, uh, the A-triple-F that does have the PFOS in it, but we're changing the way that we do business to be able to make it safer. Since, like I said, since 2015, A-triple-F has not been used, um, in our, uh, triannual drills. Now, we're only using water during those drills. We have no longer used those in our annual testing, and I'll get into that in the next slide. In 2016, we did have to respond to an aircraft accident at the airfield. The aircraft landed in one of our parking lots, so as you can imagine, there was a lot of flammable liquids that were associated with that. We did use the foam, um, to blanket that, um, particular accident. Only 10 gallons were applied. Uh, when we looked at, um, what was left in the truck, we realized only 10 gallons were applied. All were captured in, within a catch basin. We vac, had that vacuum trucked out and removed from the site. Prior to that incident, we have not used foam since 1981. That's pretty amazing. The airport, um, in, uh, shifting focus with how we would do our own business, the, um, airport was the first one in Massachusetts to put, uh, purchase this ecological unit. It's that small cart that you see in front of our, um, firefighting truck. That unit was purchased before FAA approved it for use at airports. We said, "We have to do something, um, in this area, we're surrounded by drinking water." So, um, it eliminates the need for the airport to actually deploy foam onto the, onto the, um, outside, onto the ground. Um, it allows us to do our FAA-required test all internally. All the foam and all the water stays within the cart system. This will give you a little indication of our timeline of what we've been doing and working with DEP. We've been, um, coordinating with the town of Barnstable as well. We've been coordinating with Dan Santos, um, on a regular basis as we move forward. But this gives you a snapshot of where we've gone and what our next steps are in responding to DEP's concerns. Request for information, an RFI was sent to us in August of, uh, 2016. We responded to that with the information DEP was asking for, which included soil sampling, water testing, to try to identify where our site was on the airport. Notice of Responsibility was in November of that same year, and we responded with the additional, um, request that they had. Turning into 2017, um, we all have so had requests for additional information due to a construction project that we had done on the airport, just to type, to test those soils and to ensure that there wasn't any PFOS located in those soils that we used. And then, um, in this year, of July of this year, we also were, um, part of a public involvement plan to make sure that the public was aware of the steps that we have taken at the airport. Um, we've also responded with regular updates to DEP through status reports to identify where we are in the process. Those are every, every six months or so, we provide them with detailed information. And right now, our Phase 2 Comprehensive Site Assessment is ongoing, so we're still collecting data and still working through that. This graphic here shows where some of those monitoring wells, I know it might be hard to see on the screen there, but the red dots identify where we've tested, um, water for PFOS, uh, within the groundwater. Um, we also have, uh, collected a number of soil, um, soil tests as well. The results from these wells, the additional soil samples that we've taken, and the known historic sites on the airport where we have sprayed foam, um, and I'll show you those in the next slide, um, they identified 2.25 acres of responsibility for the airport where we have a known release, if you will, of, of this PFOS. This graphic here shows the airport property map. Um, the lines on that graph, um, basically show the groundwater flow, so it's, uh, moves from a northwest direction, south, um, towards the harbor. Those two blue, uh, squares, if you will, on the bottom southeast corner of our property line, the property line is outlined in black. Those are the two locations that DEP, um, has identified with us as being the affected area on the airport. Uh, I'll go into a little bit more detail here. Of those areas, uh, you know, the airport has 639 acres, and for us to say that just over two acres were affected, um, I'm glad about that, I'm pretty impressed with that, because then that gives us an opportunity to say, "Where's our central area that we need to concentrate on for mitigation?" So this deployment area right here that you see on this graphic, this is the location that we have, uh, done, have completed our, uh, triannual drills, uh, since the early 80s. This is the location that we have always, um, had those drills, conducted those drills. So as you can imagine, that has a lot of foam, um, and PFOS deposits that were found in that location. The next location, um, on the airfield is located directly in front of our, um, barn where we keep our firefighting foam and our firefighting vehicles. Um, so when our staff would have to go out and test those vehicles, oftentimes, they wouldn't necessarily go to the MCI site to test those vehicles, they would do it right in front of the building. So that was the other hotspot that was recognized. The airport has been working, um, very hard and tirelessly with Mass DEP to identify those boundaries and to identify those sites. And our next step is really mitigation. Um, the airport continues to provide analysis to Mass DEP, um, when they've asked us for more detailed information. And in many ways, DEP is using, uh, this airport, um, to gather some information that they can use for the rest of the state. So, like I said, our next step is mitigation, so that comes to my request for this evening. The supplemental funding in the amount of $150,000 for mitigation is for those impacts. In the fiscal year 2020 budget, I budgeted $100,000, but when we looked at what options we had for mitigation, um, and the best course of action for mitigation, it ends up being, um, costing a tad more than what we had budgeted. Um, the infiltration and precipitation of PFOS through the soils can be mitigated by capping it. We looked for $100,000, we were looking at putting a temporary cap, which is, um, a poly, um, fabric cap on top of those areas. But we've identified that asphalt, um, would be a more permanent cap, so we're doing, we're looking at a combination of the two. And because of putting asphalt versus just this, uh, cover that we were going to put over this temporary cover, um, this is more permanent. It provides a better solution quicker, and it stops really, uh, the continued infiltration into groundwater of this PFOS. That's all I have for, uh, that particular item.
All right. Thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, so this is a public hearing, so if any members of the public wish to speak, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? All right, public hearing is closed. Any questions on this item? Councillor Dagwan?
Yes, I just want to ask about the temporary capping. I know you're doing this. How long will that temporary capping last? With the asphalt and all the other things here?
We're giving the temporary cap a three-year, uh, span for us to do monitoring, to see if it's something that will transition into permanent. So, we're giving it a name as, as temporary, just while we monitor to determine the effectiveness of it.
So you expect that it's gonna be a permanent cap, you think?
After three years, if, if the data shows that the cap has done what we said, then, then yes.
And how long will that cap last?
Uh, there'll be a continued monitoring to see how long the cap will last, but typically, you know, asphalt would just be a continued repair cycle. So you'd go, you'd, you'd patch, the cap would stay.
Thank you.
Councillor Cullum?
Thank you for a very thorough report. We talk a lot about the Fire Training Academy, but we hadn't yet heard from the airport publicly, so it's great to know that you've done all that really thorough testing and, and that you guys are, are well on your way, so I just wanted to say thank you very much for that information.
Councillor Starr?
Good eve, oh, good evening. Um, the public involvement plan?
Yes.
Is that gonna continue? I know, I went to one meeting at the, at the airport. Is that, is that a ongoing, um, series of presentations as you move through the process?
We will have another presentation. It will be after the Phase 2 Comprehensive Study that's done, which will give more detail as to the permanent and temporary caps, and then the start of monitoring of those caps to give them more detailed information. Um, the draft and the final PIP have been posted on our website. Um, the draft was in, um, October, uh, October, I believe, and the final was in September, was it, uh, September and October, I believe, sorry. Um, so they are on our website, but we will have another public meeting to discuss the results and the mitigation factors.
Okay. So the, the PC, the PFOS has, um, there are two areas.
Mm-hmm.
Has it, and they're, they're north of the, um, of the town, of the town wells, the mayor wells?
Yes, they are.
Um, have they moved toward the wells? Has the, and PFOS has been there for, you've been, you've been spraying it in the woods for 20 years?
Right.
30 years?
Right.
So it's, so it's not just sitting there waiting to be capped? It moves with the water, it's pretty soluble?
It, it does, and if, Brian, if you can just touch upon the, the testing that has been done south of where we are, um, in, in those wells as well, and the findings that you have so far.
Sure. So, we've continued to test to determine the extent of the PFOS plume.
Okay.
Um, we've identified that there's actually three plumes. One that we know is ours, then there's other plumes that are coming onto the airport property. And, uh, the PFOS does leach to groundwater, and there is the source in soil, so the point of the cap is, is to cap it so that it doesn't continue to leach. The groundwater plume will eventually move and, and separate off, but there won't be a continuing source.
So is the, is the, so do you know where the other source is?
The other sources, we haven't identified yet.
Yeah, right now, we, when we put in the, the monitoring wells, um, that we placed in, we did have some, let me go back to that graphic. So you can see where we have some monitoring wells that are up in the north part of the airport, um, off to the southwest of the airport, and now, wells have actually captured PFOS coming onto airport from, off airport property. So they're coming from somewhere, and as we say that, you know, this chemical is found in a lot of different industrial and, and consumer products, so who knows where it's coming from, but it, we do have some coming on the airport from the north. So the airport is confident with the area that they've identified, but we're still being, uh, we're still have, if you will, washed through, um, we had, obviously from the flow of the water, let me go to the next graphic. Um, the groundwater flow and the direction of flow, it's coming from the north to the south and across the east, so it's coming right through the airport. So any industrial activity that had PFOS associated with it, it's picking it up and it's coming right across that 639 acres of the airport.
So you test for six different kinds of PFOS? Is that right?
That's what's-
Does, does the, does the foam, firefighting foam have a, have a, um, like a fingerprint? I mean, can you tell percentages of each one? Will it tell you exactly where it came from?
Yes.
Yes.
So where's it coming from? Is it foam?
We're not done with our analysis yet, so, but-
That's the question, that it's hanging over the world.
No, and we, and we still need to, to continue going through that analysis, and, um, that is something that we're looking at. How do you fingerprint? How do you identify what's airport PFOS and what's coming from elsewhere? And there's a way to do it, we're just not done with the analysis. That's part of that comprehensive, that Phase 2, that's what we're, in fact, the next item on the agenda is to ask for more funding to be able to continue that research.
Okay. Cause I know you've found, you've found PFOS in other places on the airport, but sing, you know, one out of six or something.
We found PFOS in other locations, um, coming just, just off-site, from different locations onto the airport.
So it's interesting, it's just showing up everywhere. Um, just not, not all six of them necessarily, but one here, one there, and nobody knows where they came from.
Right. I mean, you can tell in the areas that we know where we've used foam, we have larger concentrations, so we know that we have to deal with that effect.
So why don't, um, what, what about the option of just letting it go? Letting it go to the mayor plant and putting it through the $12 million filtration plant?
I, I, because we've already worked with DEP and they've have asked us to find a mitigating, um, to mitigate for it. So their charge to us is, these are the steps that you have to take because it's considered hazardous. These are the steps that you have to take. So we're following our protocol with state DEP.
Okay. Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councill, no. Who's pointing at who? Councillor Neary, you have something?
Just a quick one. Thank you, Katie. Just a clarification, you mentioned the, uh, original budget was $100,000, this is $150,000, so it's a $50,000 increase, is that correct? Or is it an additional $150,000?
An additional $150,000.
Um, this is probably directed towards Horstley-Witten. PFOS by its nature doesn't break down. It's one of these, it's got a brutal half-life, it lasts for quite a long time. I'm assuming, even, uh, in part of the intro and, and explanation, it talks about excavation. I'm sure that's been looked at, or, I mean, you know, dig a giant hole in the ground, pull out as much of that dirt as you can, and maybe cap it. I just, I'm curious what the thoughts are.
We're looking at it where, if you dig up the problem, we're just moving it somewhere else.
That's true.
It's been, we've, we've looked at it both ways. There's not really any facilities in Massachusetts that are taking it because no one really wants to bring it to their site.
Mm-hmm.
If you keep it onsite, it's already there, we cap it, and then you reduce the infiltration, and that's what the real problem is, that's how it's getting to groundwater. So the, the best solution for us for now is to, is to keep it onsite.
We, basically, we're putting a rain cap over it, we're just gonna-
Yes.
Prevent, you know, uh, surface water and, and, uh, rain from permeating through the, the soil and dragging more of it into, into the, uh, do, uh, will there be a day when, when we can drag it up somewhere and figure out a way to burn it or clean it or something?
Hopefully, hopefully the technology will come out.
It's a very stubborn, very, very stubborn, um, compound. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? We good? All right, um, so I have a motion to move the question then? I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? All right, this is a roll call vote, so I'll turn it over to the Assistant Town Clerk.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Rob Kersetti?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.[1725.86]
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Neary, could you please read item 2020-053 and open the public hearing?
Sure will, Mr. Chairman. This is old business, requiring a roll call majority vote before a public hearing. It's item number 2020-053, the appropriation and transfer order and the amount of $100,000 for the fiscal year 2020 airport capital budget for the purpose of funding airport capital improvement projects for ongoing evaluations of per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, or PFAS, and 1-4 dioxane, as written.
I have a second. I know you did the rationale, so the rationale of this would be ditto.
Ditto.
All right. So we'll go right to the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak to this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye. All those opposed, abstentions? And again, any council discussion on this item? Counselor Rapp Grissette.
Thank you. This is just, we're transferring from your reserves for both of these items. Do you anticipate any kind of FAA support on this, or no?
Right now, we've asked FAA to participate. They typically don't when it comes to environmental issues, even though it's the sole source firefighting foam that they're requiring us to use.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be nice if they did.
There are some state funds that we might be able to tap into that's not associated with aeronautics, but just in general state funds, so we'll try to look into that as an opportunity. We have spent a lot of money on this, it's important. Drinking water is important.
Absolutely.
We've spent about $517,000 on this effort, and we'll do what we need to do to make sure that we're not adding to the problem.
Okay. Thank you, Katie.
Anyone else? Counselor Beedenbender?
So just to confirm, you get no financial relief for something that you're mandated to do, to use, and then required to clean up as well?
Correct. And that is frustrating for us, but on the flip side, when we look at our overall asset management that FAA pays for, which is about 90% for the vast majority of our projects, sometimes you have to pick and choose your battles.
Okay.
Any other counselors? I have a second. All those in favor of moving the question say aye. Aye. Any opposed abstentions? Again, this is a roll call vote, so turn it over to the Assistant Town Clerk.
Rapp Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert?
Yes.
Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Shaughnessy?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Stein-Hilber?
Yes.
Beedenbender?
Yes.
Bogan?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
You too.
All right, we're going to move on to new business. Counselor Schnep, could you please read item 2020-060 and refer to a public hearing on December 5th, please?
Yes. This is new business, refer to a public hearing on December 5th, 2019. Item 2020-060, appropriation order of $730,000 for the Water Enterprise Fund fiscal year 2020 operating budget.
I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2020-060 to a public hearing on December 5th, 2019, say aye. Aye. Any opposed abstentions? All right. The next two items, actually, we're going to have Mark Millen come up. I just want to skip down. Paul, Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2020-063 and refer to a second read on December 5th, please? On page 28.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is new business, refer to a second reading on 12/05/19. Item number 2020-063, order to approve term of contract change for personal property valuation update services in the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts for fiscal year 2021 through 2024.
I have a second. Thank you. All those in favor of referring item 2020-063 to a second reading on December 5th, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? That passes. Counselor Hebert, could you help me out one more time with item 2020-064, please?
Yes.
Refer that to a second read on December 5th?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is new business to refer to a second reading on 12/05/19. Item number 2020-064, order to approve term of contract change for real property valuation update services in the town of Barnstable, Massachusetts for fiscal years 2021 through 2024.
I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2020-064 to a second read on December 5th, please say aye. Any opposition, abstentions? All right. Counselor Dagwan, could you please read item 2020-061 and refer to a public hearing on December 5th, please?
Yes, item 2020-061, allocation of a tax levy fiscal year 2020 residential exemption, refer to a public hearing on 12/5/19.
I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2020-061 to a public hearing on December 5th, 2019, say aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? Please note Counselor Cullum has left the dais. Counselor Dagwan, can you help me out with one more? Item 2020-062, and refer that to a public hearing on December 5th, 2019, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 2020-060, appropriation order and the amount of $730,000 for the Water Enterprise Fund fiscal year 2020 operating expense budget.
No, item 2020-062, tax factor.
Oh, 62, sorry. I forgot the one above it. Item 2020-062, allocation of a tax levy fiscal year 2020 tax factor, and this should be referred to a public hearing on 12/5/19.
I have a second. All those in favor of referring item 2020-062 to a public hearing on December 5th, please say aye. Any abstentions opposed? Please note Counselor Cullum is returned. Welcome back. All right. So these last two items, item 2020-061 and 2020-062, we'll have a public hearings on December 5th for those. But as we've done the last couple of years, on the first read, we've invited our Finance Director Mark Millen, our Director of Assessing, Ed O'Neill, in to kind of give us an overview of the residential exemption and the tax factor, so that in the next couple of weeks, if a counselor has a question, they can approach our Finance Department before we come to the next meeting, we'll have an actual vote. And we have some new councils here, so this will actually be educational this time around. Go ahead.
Thank you, Counselor, and good evening again. Again, Mark Millen, Director of Finance for the town of Barnstable, along with Director of Assessing, Ed O'Neill. And again, I'd like to reiterate that invitation to reach out to either one of us over the next couple of weeks before December 5th, if you have any questions regarding this information. I apologize for throwing so many numbers at you tonight, it just happens to be that time of year. So we have two decisions to make every year before we issue our third and fourth quarter tax bills, and these two tax levy shifting options will not change the amount of taxes that we're going to raise this fiscal year. It only determines whether or not we want to shift some of those taxes within, between taxpayers, within a class, and between classes of taxpayers. So the first thing we want to illustrate is, or provide you is information as to how do we arrive at the 2020 tax levy, and this is the calculation to get to it. We start with the 2019 levy limit, that's subject to Proposition 2.5, and that was $121 million. 2.5% of that is $3 million, and then we add in the new growth that we achieved for fiscal year '20, and that's $1.2 million. That gives us a preliminary levy limit for fiscal year 2020 of $125 million. Then to that, we can add voter-excluded exclusions. One of them being Cape Cod Regional Technical High Schools, debt service of $2.3 million, and the Cape Cod Commission assessment, which was approved a few decades ago, and that helps fund the Cape Cod Commission. Every town on the Cape pays towards that assessment. And that gives us a maximum allowable levy of $128.5 million. We're going to assess, or to set the budget, we used $128,392,000 with a little bit of excess taxing capacity left over. And that's the tax levy for fiscal year '20. Again, these two options will not change that number, it'll only decide if we want to shift some of that to other classes. So to figure out what the tax rate's going to be, we need to look at what the assessed valuations for fiscal year 2020 look like. And this is where they're at. Our tax assessed values went from $14.2 billion to over $15 billion, about a 6% increase over the previous fiscal year. $135 million of that was attributable to new building growth, and $694 million is attributable to appreciation in property values, mainly residential. So we take that $15 billion and divide it into the levy of $128 million, we're looking at a tax rate of $8.51 for fiscal year 2020. That's 10 cents less than the tax rate for fiscal year 2019, and that's because the percentage increase in property valuation increased at a higher rate than the tax levy increased. And so again, these two shifting options will decide how are we going to distribute that $128,392,000 amongst the classes of property. And you can see that the residential class makes up over 88% of our property valuation, so they pay 88% of the tax levy, or $113.7 million, with the balance being paid by the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So the two options are a residential exemption. This allows us to shift a portion of that $113 million residential tax levy between taxpayers within the residential levy. Doesn't impact the commercial, industrial, and personal property taxpayers. Essentially, taxes from primary residence homeowners who live in the town of Barnstable, some of those taxes can be shifted to second homeowners, but it also impacts some of our primary homeowners whose values exceed a certain dollar threshold, and I'll show you what that threshold is in a minute. And then the second option is to split the tax rate between the commercial class, commercial, industrial, personal property class, and the residential class. We can increase the tax rate on that CIP class and reduce the tax rate on the residential class if we choose to do so. So the first option, residential exemption. There's 16 communities that currently approve a residential exemption in fiscal year '19. We don't expect that to change. The same 16 communities will most likely adopt the same residential exemption this year. It could go as high as 35%. We currently have, we've had a 20% residential exemption in place since 2006. The exemption is applied, is up to 35% of the total average residential parcel value, and I'll show you how that is calculated. The property must be the primary residence of the homeowner. They need to file their state and federal income taxes from this location. The option shifts the taxes within that residential class only, and it does not change the amount of levy that the residential class will pay. They'll pay that $113 million. And again, 16 communities have adopted this. We have about 11,769 qualifying properties under the residential exemption currently. So to arrive at the amount of the residential exemption for fiscal year 2020, we take the residential value of $13.3 billion divided by the number of residential parcels of $25,000, and that gives us an average residential value of $520,000. At a 20% exemption, which is what we currently have in place, the exemption value would be $104,121, and the number of eligible parcels to receive that exemption are 11,769, meaning that $1.2 billion of property value will not be taxed on those primary homeowners. At the maximum amount of 35%, the exemption is worth $182, the value of the exemption is worth $182,000, and that would remove $2.1 million from the calculation of the tax rate, because that would not become subject to taxes. So to arrive at the, what the tax, the tax rate has to be adjusted when we move valuation from the formula. So if the residential value's $13.3 million, and we're not going to tax $1.2 million of it with a 20% exemption, the net value tax is $12.1 million. Still, that levy doesn't change. It's $113.7 million, so the tax rate would go up on the residential class to $9.37. This year, it's $9.51 with the 20% residential, or last year it was $9.51 with the residential exemption, so it's less than last year's tax rate still. And at a 35% residential exemption, it would be $10.14. The impact to the median residential value in town, the median residential value is now up to $376,000. If $104,000 of that was not taxed, the homeowner would be taxed on only $271,000. The rate would be $9.37, so their tax bill would drop from $3,200 to $2,548, saving them $652. And at the maximum amount of the exemption, it would save them $1,235. The break-even point, because that increase in the tax rate, would be at $1,134,450. So a primary resident who lives in town with a house valued at that amount or higher will pay more in taxes. At that, at less than that amount, they'll see some kind of savings from a 20% residential This chart illustrates the, how that works. The blue bar represents the median property value of, or represents various property valuations as if no exemption was in place. The orange bar represents the same property value with a qualifying property receiving a 20% residential exemption, and the green bar represents a non-qualifying, the tax bill on a non-qualifying residential parcel. So you can see the difference between the blue bars and the orange bars decline as the property value increases. The tax benefit declines as those property values go up. Till you reach that $1,134,000, and the primary residential homeowner pays the same amount of taxes as if no exemption were in place, or a 21, 20% exemption was in place. And then after that point, you can see that the tax bill starts to go up for the primary homeowner, after that break-even point. The second option is the split tax rate. This allows us to shift a portion of the residential levy to the commercial, industrial, and personal property tax classes. This one actually shifts taxes between classes, now within the class. So at every, this illustration shows that every five, increment of five, about $731,000 of tax levy gets shifted from the residential class to the CIP class. At the maximum shift of 1.5, we would shift $7.3 million from the residential class to the CIP class. And you can see the significant changes in the tax rate as a result of that. The residential tax rate doesn't go down that much, from $9.37 to $8.77, but the significant, there's a significant increase in the CIP tax rate from $8.51 to $12.77, and the reason being is that we are predominantly a residential tax-based community. So you're shipped, for every $1 that a residential taxpayer saves, a CIP taxpayer is going to pay about $9 more. And this chart illustrates that impact on a median valued property of $376,000. You can see the orange line is the CIP tax bill at various shifts, and you can see how that increases significantly as opposed to the gradual decline in the residential tax bill, as an impact of those shifts. And again, $1 in savings versus $9 in additional taxes for the CIP taxpayer. And so, Ed and I will make ourselves available to any counselor over the next couple of weeks who may want to delve into this further, to understand how these tax levy shifting options take place and the impacts of those, and we'll be happy to answer any questions this evening as well.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the presentation. And just looking at the hour, and we do have a little bit more business left to take, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to leave this as more of an informational presentation. We'll have opportunity to discuss at the next meeting, obviously, and you have an open invite for any questions that you may have, to have a one-on-one with either Mark or Ed. So, I appreciate you both for the information, for being here tonight, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Or two weeks from now, yeah. I may see you next week, who knows? All right. So before we move into, we're done with the orders of the day, we have to do nominations for 2020 offices for President and Vice President. Before we do that, we just have a little bit of housekeeping. Counselor Rapp Grissette?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I move to suspend the provisions of Town Council Rules 1 and 3 pertaining to the nomination election schedule for President and Vice President, to allow the nominations for President and Vice President to take place at this meeting, and to allow the vote for President and Vice President to take place on or before the first meeting in December, including at this meeting.
I have a second? Okay. And just to give a little bit of background, obviously, there's some new councils here as well. Historically, we have the nominations in the first meeting in December, and then we'd have the vote at the second meeting in December. The times we haven't done that is when there's not any contested races, so then we do suspend the rules on the first meeting of December and hold the vote that night. We're obviously in an unprecedented situation here. Some of it very unfortunate, obviously, but I think the idea with the outgoing leadership before the last meeting, some counselors had asked that we have that resolution that was on for the last meeting, that we would discuss this tonight, to basically move everything forward one meeting. We have Town Council rules, and then there's Charter rules, they don't always mesh-
They don't always mesh completely, but basically, we're not supposed to go more than two meetings without leadership. Actually, it says Vice President, doesn't say anything about President. But by suspending the Town Council rules, which are really guidelines, so we're able to do that, that kind of fulfills that. So, we didn't have leadership tonight, per se, but we would take care of that at the next meeting. The reason I'm chairing this tonight is not because I'm a past president, but just for the public and everyone also to know, in the absence of a President and Vice President, the Chair of the meeting goes in precinct order, starting with Precinct 1. But obviously, Counselor Starr is the first meeting, so we didn't want to do that kind of damage to him in the first meeting. So, I'm in Precinct 2. I'm in... Yeah. I'm in Precinct 2. So, I was happy to chair this meeting. And then at the next meeting, we'll go to Precinct 3, which is Counselor Hebert. I think the vision from the outgoing leadership was we have this meeting. The next meeting gets opened. You have roll call, Pledge of Allegiance, moment of silence, public comment, because public sometimes likes to come and speak about the people that have been nominated. And then I think the idea was to go right into a vote, and then whoever won that vote would take over the gavel and run the next meeting. So, that was kind of the vision that was laid out there, but it's obviously up for discussion here, with this council to decide how to proceed. So, we have that motion on the table. We have a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, then I... Oh, Counselor Hebert?
So, thank you. But so, the discussion on the motion is... We're going to do nominations this evening.
It was to suspend the rules. We're just moving everything forward.
Right. Is that... Are we voting for whether we would vote tonight?
No, we're voting if we would suspend the rules to nominate tonight. We could have a vote tonight. That would be a separate motion.
Separate motion.
Right. But this is just to suspend the rules to give us the option.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, no other comments? All those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstention? All right. At this point, I will turn it over to the Assistant Town Clerk, who will handle the nominations for President and Vice President.
This evening, we will accept nominations from the floor for the Office of President and Vice President of the Town Council. The rules for this evening are as follows. Starting with the Office of President, I will need a motion to nominate in a second. Discussions and speeches are not appropriate for the nominating process. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I now open the floor for nominations for the Office of President.
I would have the honor to nominate Paul Hebert as President.
I would like to make a motion to nominate Counselor Jen Cullum for President.
I would move to nominate Jessica Rapgusseti for President.
I declare the nominations for President to be closed. I now open the floor for the nominations for the Office of Vice President.
Madam Clerk, I have the equal honor to nominate Counselor Matt Lebec for Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Britt Beedenbender for Vice President.
And I'd like to nominate Jessica Rapgusseti for Vice President.